Okay, great. Everybody, please turn your microphones on if you have not already. It is a few minutes as usual after six. It's my pleasure to call to order the Wednesday, August 3rd, meeting of the Freeport Planning Board. As usual, item number one, informational exchange. I was not at the last Downtown Vision Plan Implementation Task Force meeting. Rosemary, were you there?
Yep.
Okay, so we will have to rely on Caroline to give us a brief update on that. I hope to make the next one and many after that.
Sure. So the Downtown Vision Task Force meets on the fourth Thursday of every month. They've been meeting via Zoom, which seems to be working pretty good. I'll say in peak of summer, we've had our numbers down a little bit, but continue to be well represented by our communities and the different boards and committees we have in Freeport from Accessibility Task Force, Complete Streets Planning Board, Project Review Board, Council, FSAB, and others to name a few. So what the committee's been doing is looking at that implementation table that Principal Group put together in the vision report. Each board and committee, which we've talked about at the past meetings, has kind of gone in and flagged a few things that they're working on that they would like to work on. And we've kind of narrowed it down from priorities. And then further from there, myself, Councilor Pilch, Mary Davis from FEDC, and Adam Bliss, Town Engineer, have kind of gone through the list and weeded it down more. So the next step will be to take a list to the council for consideration for projects and implementation efforts that we want to kind of rank as being our community's priorities for funding and the different resources that we have available. There were some specific projects that were listed in the vision report. That will be the next step that we're going through that they'll talk about at the next meeting. I think in September, the Town Council will hear from the implementation group as to what the priorities should be, and we'll get council input on what they feel the priorities should be based upon that list. Sorry, that's kind of long.
All right.
Want me to go into number two?
Sure.
Number two is update of items reviewed by Project Review Board. So the Project Review Board...
Could I take you back?
Sure.
Is there a... Are there particular priorities that we're supposed to be focused on? Is that clear?
So Sam and Rosemary, I think, had weighed in. Do you want to rewind to the priorities that you...
I mean, I don't want to be too remedial, but I also want to make sure that we're doing our part to enable what's...
Yeah, so the priorities that we'd identified were the... Caroline, you may have to help me on the other, the second one. But one of them is the, is overhauling the design review standards, which is a big one. And that's where we are with that. It's basically, you know, we've got some funding in the works for, you know, some help from consultants so that it, because we are not very well equipped to do, write that whole document ourselves. And then the other one is sort of related, isn't it?
Yeah, so the other one was, there was an implementation to look at parking. And so incremental approach, that's one of the things that you guys were talking about tonight, downtown parking requirements. The other one was affordable housing, I think was the other one that was right by the planning board. Kind of intertwined.
Well, it's related to the parking thing, and it's related to the design standards.
Right.
And if I could voice a concern, it's just that we act as expeditiously as possible on that because there are projects coming down the pike that should reflect that. And they don't have the guidance that we could or should offer. And I realize it's going to take a year probably.
Yeah, well, it has to take a year, right? Because we have the funding, we gotta spend the money. So it's, it has to take a year or less.
But we should do what we can to be expeditious about it.
Did that answer your question?
That's, yes.
And then the second was items reviewed by the Project Review Board. The Project Review Board received another application for some downtown housing. We call it all multifamily, whether it's apartments or condos. But that was for the lot next door. They reviewed that application. And then they also had an application they reviewed for some stream crossings because they were in stream protection. That's not something they normally see, but something that's under shoreline zoning in the new ordinance. So they saw two applications for some stream crossings on a residential property to do some repair work in one of the urban impaired watersheds.
This is like a driveway that crosses them?
No, it's just some stream crossings. And one of them was used like to get to Backwoods to do some timber harvesting.
Oh, okay.
Did that go through?
Two of them were approved.
There's three, right?
There's going to be a third one coming to the board this month. Yep.
All right. Anything else? Any other information to exchange? Great. Item number two is, will be a public hearing on proposed amendments to Section 104 definitions and Section 514 off-street parking and loading of the Freeport zoning ordinance. We've been talking about this for, what, a couple of months now? And we also just heard, as Caroline said, it sort of relates to the, the implementation of the Downtown Vision Plan, that, that planning process that's been happening for quite a while now. So excited to hopefully take some action on that. Caroline, do you have an intro for us on this one, or...
Sure. I was just... Hold on. Let me rewind. I had some more statistics that Cecilia's been working on to share with you guys tonight. So yes, we've been talking about parking, well, for years, but...
Yep.
This board has actively been talking about parking for the past couple of months. So we've reviewed the parking downtown, how Freeport's unique in that we have a shared parking concept. We have a lot of parking lots that everyone, you know, thinks you can come to Freeport and park in town parking, but in reality, most of them are privately owned. The town owns a very small fraction of the 3,000 off-street parking spaces that are located in downtown Freeport. We've studied parking for years. We have that shared parking program so that you have the ability to provide your parking onsite or offsite through the shared parking program. By participating in shared parking, you provide parking, but you don't restrict it only for your business or use so that you can come park anywhere, almost anywhere in Freeport, have a lower parking requirement, and you're not going to restrict your parking on your site so that you can only park there when you're going to one business. Back in 2019, the Planning Board made some recommendations to change parking requirements in the village. And it went through, actually, they talked about it for a couple of years. I think Sam might have been the only board member that's still here. And Robert.
Yeah, I was there, yeah.
Yeah, they talked about it. So they made some parking requirement, or changes, back in 2019 to lower the parking requirement, mostly for our commercial businesses because that's the majority of we have down there. After that change was made, it gave business owners or property owners the ability to come in and get parking recalculations. I think we all thought the expectation was that people would line up Town Hall and outside of Town Hall the next day and ask for their parking to be recalculated. But that wasn't the reality. I had a couple of small businesses come in right away because they pay a lot of money to lease parking because they don't have it onsite. And so we did a couple parking recalculations early on, but some of the bigger ones kind of trickled in because when you lowered the standard, you also changed the way that they calculated the square footage. So big businesses had to go in and measure and recalculate. So when you drive through Freeport today, you think we have a lot of parking and a lot of it's not being used. A lot of it is sitting there today, like hundreds and hundreds of spaces. I'd say about 400 to 500 spaces are sitting on the face of the earth, not meeting a requirement. People have just chosen to leave them there and not do anything with the properties. So we expected, as a board, I think as a community, when we lowered it, that we would see redevelopment at some point. But it's taken, I think, a little longer since we've been in a pandemic. So fast forward, we've talked about existing residential downtown, which we know is pretty unlimited. We looked at some shared parking maps last month just to better understand, like, the business could be here, but they own parking here, here, and here, and vice versa. Just to give you some more background, I put in your pocket a report that was done 2017 based upon 2016 data. Historically, for years and years, I mean, I've been here 20 years and we've done it most of the time, we actually count parking spaces in the summer. It's really hot. It's really fascinating. Cecilia can vouch, you see some really interesting things when you're walking around county parking lots. Less interesting as time's gone on, but you still do see some interesting patterns. So as you saw in the 2016 data, we had a lot of vacancies. So Cecilia has been working hard this week in taking the data from 2021. In 2016, we were super lucky that we had somebody on board that was able to go out multiple times a day and count parking. We don't have that now. We don't have anyone that can be out counting parking lot data. So, you know, last year and even this year, our data is more limited. But we still took the data that we had and just kind of compiled it. Cecilia, can you point me...
I put it on the powerpoint on the packet.
Oh, okay. I went to the other one. Thank you. There we go. Okay, so you had... Sorry, let me just open this and, okay, zoom in here for you. So in your packets, you have some data about the parking. And this is, Cecilia, is this the 2021 data that you have right here?
Yes.
Okay, so for 2021, you can see that we have certain parking lots that we count every year. So we count a parking lot down at the Community Center, over near CBS, both levels of the parking garage. We count the Howard Place parking lot, which is actually a municipal parking lot out behind the gap, kind of abutting the high school fields. The Tuscan Bistro, there's two lots back there that we count. And then we count another lot on Depot Street. These are ones we've historically counted over the years. So this summer, counting, these show you what are, sorry, last summer, 2021, what the average vacancy rates compiled for each of the parking lots are. I don't think there was a day that we ever were able to count and saw them totally all full. Is that correct?
It depends on the lot, so...
But not all of them. They were not all full.
Only the RV and college place were ever...
Those are the only ones that were ever full.
That were ever full, and one of them was, including the day after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, the RV lot is a little bit hard to count. Like, today I went down there and it was full, but you had like huge campers with like a big truck on the back and so... But it's full. It's very well utilized. So this will just show you from, again, this is last year. We don't have our numbers compiled yet for 2022 because we're still counting. But the vacancy rates of our parking lot on average were between 56% and then 86%. So you had in your packet the 2020, sorry. You had, that's, sorry, 2016. So here, we just kind of put them side by side. Granted, we've had a pandemic. There's been weird shopping patterns. People have been traveling different, but this is just to give you a snapshot of the data. The vacancy rates, you can see that the vacancies for 2021 was quite a bit higher than the data that you had in your packet from the 2016 study. Again, a little bit different, same lots, not as much counting. But we just thought it'd be helpful for you guys to see a comparison.
Yeah, definitely.
Caroline, the one that you labeled Depot Street, was that, does that include the Amtrak station parking?
We do not count the Amtrak station parking lot. That's, in the grand scheme of things, a relatively new parking lot. It's not one that we've historically counted. We have just kind of tried to keep the consistency. It was, we have a map here. It just shows you kind of how they're spaced throughout town.
This isn't all of them. It's just a steady sample.
It's a sampling of different parts in town. It was interesting. We were talking about parking today and just how the patterns have shifted because, you know, when we first, when I first started cutting this, it was always full out there. You could always park behind the Tuscan Bistro. But like, we're seeing pattern shift and people are parking, you know, in different, in different spaces.
When you, when you show those utilization rates, that's not the overall utilization rate in the whole town, right?
No, no, we would be out there all day if we, if we counted every parking lot. Just, just a sampling we use to...
But as a sample, it's still probably representative, right? I mean, that's your assumption.
Yeah, I would say it's well-rounded, you know, as like, for example, the Community Center has a lot of programming now. They offer a lot. So that parking lot's, you know, more full. We, you know, behind Tuscan Bistro, used to always be really empty, but luckily, there's a successful business in there. So we see that more full than it used to. But I think it gives you a, a good snapshot, and we've been counting them for a long time. So it's interesting just to see the, the patterns. And again, it's not, just watching traffic, we know it's not what it is.
One more clarification. Even the 2016 numbers, which were substantially more utilized, still showed an abundance of parking.
Yes, and that's the data that the planning, part, part of the data. You saw other reports too, that the Planning Board had looked at when they made their decisions to lower the parking requirement back in 2018, 2019. Again, just more in our ongoing education about parking for the board that I thought you might find helpful, interesting. Happy to review anything we've already reviewed at the last meetings. That was just an update. Tonight is a public hearing, so per your policy, we notified everyone in the Village Commercial One Zone indirectly abutting, which was probably about 100 or so notices, I would say.
And this only affects multifamily?
Yeah, so walking through, thanks Mitch, walking through the language before you. So we talked about this last month, no change, but the definition of shared parking, when the Planning Board, this was updated in 18, but when they updated it, they added a standard for residential shared parking, but the definition of shared parking still excluded residential. So that proposes to clean this up. When, we just did a little bit of cleanup, like referencing the right ordinance, you know, section for traffic and parking. This would be under B, sorry, I should have put page numbers on here. On page two, Village Commercial One, again, we talked about allowing multifamily to consider letting them use a combination of shared and non-shared. So if they wanted to have some onsite that said for residents only, but they wanted to lease the rest through existing parking that was available, that they could do that. And then the one change, I realized the way we had it written last month, last month, it said multiple-family dwelling or mixed use, but that inadvertently would have impacted mixed use. So if you come in with a mixed use or a building with a couple types of uses, we look at all the uses individually and add up the parking. So this really just is for multifamily because mixed use could have different types of uses in one building. And it could have a variety, like, they could have just one unit. They could have a single family with an office or vice versa. So we didn't want to accidentally mess that up. Based upon our conversation, our conversation has really been limited to trying to encourage more multifamily. This was identified as a barrier. So this is really just cleaning up exactly what we talked about at the past couple of meetings.
So to come out and put my cards on the table, which I think I did at the last meeting too, I, I would support lowering the, the standard to three-quarters of a spot. I think as we heard from the FEDC recommendation, and then also we heard from, from Bean. But does anybody have any questions, thoughts on that? I think before we open the public hearing, maybe a brief...
I just want to clarify for the public the change that's being proposed here and put that in context to what you just said. Because today, it's two spaces per unit, and this is taking it down...
To one.
To one.
Yep.
And that's the issue on the table. And you're saying it could be even lower. And the recommendations that we received from the vision plan was that it could be even lower. And the, the evidence of the use on parking is that there is...
There's a lot of parking, yeah.
I want to clarify one thing there because we had a problem, that we had a conflict in the existing ordinance that the definition doesn't acknowledge residential. And so you did have a shared standard for residential. We're clarifying, this would clarify, whatever the board decides, that you could use it. That would have been based off of bedrooms. So if you did shared parking, you could have had a lower requirement. A lot of residential doesn't want to do shared parking. You're right. They would be at two today. There is also a little bit of confusion out there. You made reference to, you know, a lot of the old studies say to look at lowering parking. It says to lower it to one. Common practice in a lot of places is to get rid of parking requirements for a variety of uses. We had the recommendation of the vision plan that we reversed it on and consider getting out. Based upon the Planning Board's discussion and feedback, there's been a little bit of different numbers out there. So the clarification would be one, that's on the table, for...
That's what was noticed. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump the...
Yeah, one for shared and 1.25. Not to say that you can't...
So the proposal as it now is being proposed...
Is one for shared.
Would be one if it's shared, 1.25 if it's not shared. Today, it's calculated by bedrooms, so, but it would usually be two.
If it's shared, and if we clarify that you can do shared, it could be bedrooms today. Non-shared would be two. Yes.
Right.
And those numbers were, this is the starting point for conversation based upon where you guys landed at the past week, couple of meetings. You can tweak it after public comment. You can...
Yep, I think now we should open it up.
Yeah, do we have other questions from the board? Andrew?
I just wondered if there's a ratio. I see there's going to be a mixed use between shared and onsite parking, multiple-family dwellings. Is there going to be a ratio between, it says allow use of a combination? Is there going to be some ratio?
You guys haven't talked about a ratio, like, in the past.
One-third, two-third, or...
Years past, there used to be an employee parking requirement onsite, and we got rid of that. It wasn't something you guys talked about, not to say it's something you can't consider.
Just if we're gonna, you know, if we're gonna require them to, you know, what's, what's the ratio if they're gonna go to shared? And, you know, it says it's gonna have some onsite and some shared.
Other businesses don't have to have it onsite.
Yeah.
Oh, but we're talking about residential, right?
Right.
For residential.
You're saying, you're saying, should we require a certain amount of it to be onsite? Is that the question?
That's my question. Should we?
Yeah.
You know, should there be a certain amount on...
I guess the follow-up question to that for me, and, you know, then thinking of some of the questions that have come up in previous meetings are, what happens if somebody builds? You know, we talked about, okay, if we eliminated the requirement and somebody built a building, and then all of a sudden, all of these excess parking spaces that we have go away, what happens to that building? But what happens in the case that we don't require any onsite parking? Somebody, you know, a building owner is getting, is fulfilling the requirement in the shared parking pool, and then the shared parking pool is overtaxed and there is not enough at some point in the future. If there's not enough, does the building become non-conforming? Is that, or what?
Well, that's a really interesting point. Like, for example, now, there's only two people that have selected to put their surplus parking into the shared parking pool. So if you come in to do any project and the Project Review Board reviews it, you have to show how you're meeting that parking requirement.
Right.
So if you don't want to put it onsite and you don't want a parking lot, you can get it through the shared parking pool. But if nobody wants to put their parking into lease, then you're not going to meet the requirement, and you're not going to be able to go forward.
I mean, as I've said before, I tend to think that this is not a problem that the Planning Board needs to solve. I just think it's an interesting thing to think about. Because, you know, if you think about that example, then there's a point at which everybody wants parking. Parking's going to get really expensive, and then...
But what we talked about, I think it was in June, how for developers, like, the market's going to dictate the parking. And so I don't think we need to...
The tighter the parking got, the more developers will have to provide parking.
Yeah, and that's...
Unless we're too deep in, you know, unless it, it changes over time.
I think what we have here is like a structured approach, which is why, you know, we're going with this recommendation. We're not going further down. And I think, I think sometimes what we tend to do is we tend to be like, but what if this happens? And what if that happens? And like, we need to pull back from that and...
I think it's, yeah, I think it's a, I, I really like the approach that's here. I, to answer your question for me personally, Andrew, I don't think that we should require buildings to have any onsite, at least at this time. I think it's, you know, given that some communities have been, and it's sort of, you know, current practice in a lot of places to eliminate parking requirements, we're not doing that. So it feels like a more incremental approach. And I think, I don't know, I feel pretty comfortable with it the way it is, or, as I said, reducing the shared requirement further.
I do think one difference, like, from other, some other communities, like Portland, a lot of other communities do have a lot of on-street parking. Or they own municipal garages. We're very unique in that we are not in that situation. We have a lot of, our off-street parking, which is what we look at for meeting a lot of these requirements, we're in a very different situation. We have some, but it's very limited in the grand scheme of what we have. I have had a couple people, and there's been people that have been in town for a long time, and they've seen what it's like in Freeport. Back in the day, pre-parking garage, we didn't have enough parking. So there's definitely some people that are, are nervous that we could go back to that. You know, part of the vision plan, again, it said residential look at zero. So you guys are looking at what you're comfortable with. But it also said to look at the whole parking situation downtown. And that's still something that's on the list.
Yeah, I think, you know, my, my, I think that it's, it's one data point that's, that we saw today where the, the change from 2016 to 2021 data. But I think it sort of, and there's a lot of factors that go into it, but it seems to me that the general trend right now is to having plenty of parking in town. I think if we do this, it's not going to change so quickly that there wouldn't be some reaction from some combination of, you know, this board, other boards, the market to correct the, you know, whatever issue may come up. I, I just don't think we're going to be creating a problem here that we can't solve.
Last month, you guys looked at that map. It showed you the existing residential, which we have some single-family, which they do, but we do have some apartments and multifamily tucked in that we know don't have parking onsite. They're, they're parking somewhere, or they don't have cars. You know, we're right on the transit line. We have the metro.
All right, any other thoughts from the board before we open the public hearing?
I was just, I was just gonna say, at this point, I think we all probably agree there's no scarcity of parking in town.
Right, yep.
And if the market doesn't take care of it, and at some point in the future there is more scarcity, we could always be back here and adjust this.
Exactly. And we talked about this last month, you know, now it's for the public.
For sure. Great motion to open the public hearing.
Summon.
Excellent. And a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, the public hearing is now open. I'm sure there's somebody out there who'd like to start.
Hi, everybody. I'm Whitney, Executive Director of the Freeport Chamber. And I am here in support of the reduction. And a big reason for that is when I was running for Town Council, I'd go house to house, and the biggest thing that I heard, the number one thing I heard is what are you going to do about downtown? And so we've seen this happen, and we have a solution in front of us. When we did the downtown revision, we interviewed, Mary interviewed 13 different consultants. And the one thing that they said is in order to have a vibrant downtown, that you need to have housing. And we're seeing that in either to have housing, then we need to have this reduction. It can sometimes be scary to have change, but what I think is, is really interesting is that there's a car show across the street, and I get to talk with some elders there every week. And really, what we're trying to do is actually not become Portland, but actually become the Freeport we used to be. And we used to have a lot of downtown housing here. Three-story buildings, in fact, with billboards on top of them. Can you imagine that? But we did, and they said that actually, there was, it was so great downtown because people rarely needed to use their cars during the week because everything was here and commerce was supported. And we're starting to see that with cross-street residents being our new residents in town. And I walked around town with the property manager recently, going into different businesses to create a welcome package for each new resident. And when I met with the businesses, it was really interesting for me to see how really nervous they are about the future and how excited they are about the influx of these new residents coming and how honored they would be if they would know about their stores. So I am fully in support of this. Our, as a representative of the downtown business, I really hope that you would approve this tonight. Thank you.
Hello, Brett Richardson, Executive Director of Freeport Economic Development Corporation. Thanks again for the opportunity. As I mentioned before, when I stood up here, really appreciate you guys taking this on. We know you have a full plate, and this is an important priority. We're talking about parking, we're really talking about downtown housing. And downtown housing means foot traffic for our local businesses. It means new opportunities for local young people to stay in the community at a price point that they can afford. And it means an opportunity for elders in the community to downsize and move downtown and stay in the community as well. So really appreciate the opportunity. You know, Principal Group suggested zero. I think you guys are doing the right thing by taking a measured approach. Just request that you go a little bit further. FEDC's board reached out to businesses, and we heard that, as Tony just mentioned, really, the concern is about foot traffic, not about the loss of parking. And so there's a lot of support to go lower and would request that you consider going down to 0.75 spaces for shared parking and one space for non-share. When you combine those changes with the proposal to allow developments to use both shared and non-shared to meet the requirement, you create flexibility. And that's what this community needs to embrace housing. The point was just made that developers aren't going to build something that they can't sell. If they don't have the parking that they need, they won't build it. And so I think you're going to have a nice environment here, creating a flexibility for the developer to do what they need to do to meet the market where it's at, create that foot traffic, create those housing opportunities, and move Freeport forward. So we encourage you to, to continue on, support all the recommendations. Just drop that requirement a little bit lower to 0.75 shared and one non-share. Thanks very much.
Of course, yeah, Brett, we may have a question for you.
I was just wondering, could you just talk a little bit about what, reducing it by 0.25, how that would create more flexibility in terms of offering more options for development?
Yeah, it's a great question. It really comes into play when you've got downtown housing that's in proximity to other businesses. And the idea that largely residences will use that parking in the evening. And the daytime businesses will use that parking more in the daytime. And so the impact with going a little bit lower, the daytime. And so the impact with going a little bit lower, using that shared parking model across the times of the day creates that flexibility. And if you, if we look forward into the people who are going to want to live downtown, most of the developments that you're going to see are one-bedroom, one or two bedrooms. They're relatively small and that's going to cater to a market that includes people that want to use the train. That's going to include folks who want to work from home. It's going to include folks who want to use the bus. And so if we take it as a truth that a developer's not going to build something that they can't sell, there is a market there for folks who don't want to be car-dependent. And this creates the flexibility to reach out to that market and create that opportunity to bring those people here to Freeport.
I have a question. In your conversations with developers, have you had any feedback that this particular different, you know, the difference between what we've, we put on the table and what you're suggesting, are developers aware of that distinction and would they act differently based upon that distinction?
I think, yeah, it's a good question. We heard from folks who want to build condos or folks who are in the condo market, that they're going to want one spot per unit. That's, that's what that condo market needs. But if you look at the housing crisis that, that we're in, folks are looking for housing where they can get it. And that .75, that, that quarter below, it does create that opportunity to use a piece of land and make the most use of that land. We can't, we can't make more land. All we have is what we have. We have infrastructure downtown. We have sewer. We have water. We have roads. That's where you want to build because that creates efficiencies and it doesn't require a lot of capital expenditures to expand the housing supply. So creating that flexibility downtown on the existing infrastructure is the right move.
What else? Questions for Brett?
All right. Thanks, Brett. Others?
Good evening. My name is Mark Malone and I'm a commercial real estate broker and, based out of Portland, but I've been on the FDIC board since the year 2000 when the town asked me to help do some work with moving town hall off main streets. I've been around the FDIC for about 20-plus years. And I would incur with, with some of the other comments about, you know, I don't think Freeport has everyone, I think I've beaten a dead horse here, but doesn't have a parking problem. It has more of a people problem. Frankly, you know, the shoppers in Freeport have really declined. I was interested, I was meeting with a property owner today who asked me to evaluate his property for sale and I had looked at it back in 2017. His tenants in the building have lost, average sales, the worst one was 70% drop in sales and the, and the best one was a 42% drop in sales and his rents have followed suit. You know, we saw, we saw rents in 2017 at $47 a square foot on one tenant, currently at $13.17 a square foot. You know, they have a people problem. Their sale, their rent is off, their rent is down by 71%. Their sales are off by 72%. No coincidence. So, you know, I think the housing is a, is a great first step, you know, to sort of bring Freeport in line with what you would see in other commercial developments around the country and, you know, where, you know, hospitality, housing, you know, live, work, play is being introduced as experiential or for retail to help, you know, combat the internet sales and that sort of thing. So Freeport's a little behind and, but this is a good first step. I would also encourage you not only to accept the, you know, the suggestions that FDIC put forth, .75 and one parking space for a thousand for non-shared. But I think this board at some point, maybe it's not the night, but you should look at dual-use parking. I won't use the, you know, you've got a lot of towns, my experience around the state is a lot of towns will recognize the fact that retail users are often, users use your parking during the day, apartment users, you know, use it at night. And granted, some people are going to, you know, it's not going to be 100%. Some people might work from home and might not go away. But for the most part, you know, most, most people in apartments or condos are leaving during the day. So, you know, this, this change in policy doesn't even really consider it the fact that you've got a lot of parking spaces out there that could be a dual use. They could be rented to, you know, retail user during the day and a, an apartment use at night. And I think it's not contemplated here tonight, but I think it's really something to look at as time goes forward.
Thank you.
There is actually one little thing in the ordinance, right, about reducing the, the requirement by up to 50%. The project review board has the power to do that for in certain cases if people can prove...
In zones, not VC1. We haven't, the project review board hasn't used that.
I was curious about that.
You know, most of the new development project review board has seen is in the commercial district. And a while back, they changed the parking requirements on Route 1 South. So when the applicant comes in, they prepare a parking analysis. They look in a variety of forms and shapes depending on the skill of the project, but they essentially show the board what they think they need and the board approves that during the review process. Now, again, that's a different scenario. They're all on the same property, it's the project and a common ownership, but that has actually worked well. So I can't think of a time where the board has used that. There were a couple places in years past, it might have been before we had that provision, where the applicant could show them but not build them unless they needed them. They had done that a couple times and I don't know if anyone has come forward to...
None of that would apply here in VC1.
No, as written, it doesn't apply.
Let's stay focused on VC1.
I think the, it's, it's an interesting, it's just the math of parking is never going to be perfect.
Someone did make that comment to me, but you know, we face a lot of criticism as a community for having standards that are up for interpretation or not clear or wishy-washy. So knowing that everyone's going to know what it is and adhere to the same standard, I definitely like that.
Yeah. And here we're trying to take a measured approach. I don't want to think that the project review board could then change it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's an existing thing that I think is curious. Any other comments from the public?
Glad to see there's some other perfect heads up there. I know, no one here needs a history lesson and some of us have a lot more history behind them than others. But when Catherine and I started a push cart in 1982, I think it was, that was when the preppy movement was just starting. And a friend of mine was a department head at LL Bean at the time and said they didn't have a budget. So everything was exploding. And we set up this parking policy for five million cars a year, if I'm not mistaken. And at this point, we're doing about one and a half million cars a year. And so obviously we have an abundance of asphalt. And I know that it's a, it's an income source for the town, but if we are trying to move this back to compete, to have a town that fits in with the internet age where retail is, as, as was stated, is having a, a difficult time. There are definite challenges for retail. I think that I, I would be voting for zero on the, on the parking spaces. I think we need to do everything we can to bring in main businesses. The boxes, the big boxes are history. And they, as, as you've all seen over the last 10 years, at least, they cannot leave fast enough. And I think anything we can do to bring in main businesses, local businesses, it is to the good. And I think that's what the, this whole town plan was headed for. And I, we, I think we could turn some parking spaces into, into housing if, if that worked out feasibly at this point.
That's certainly the goal.
Thank you.
Is, before you, before you leave, could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Tom Wilbur, 50 Merganser Way.
Thank you, Tom.
Sorry.
Not used to this.
It's quite all right. I know who you are, but maybe TV doesn't.
One other comment's in.
Yes.
The man who needs no introduction. I'm Mary Davis. I'm President of the Board of FDIC and thank you all for considering this. The one thing I hear a lot that people are talking about now is housing that is affordable in Freeport. And as I talk to developers, you know, we're in a really challenging time where costs to build are really high and labor is really high. And we know that the best place for us to build is in the downtown area because it's more condensed, it's where amenities are, it's close to the bus station, it's close to the train station. And I think the one way that Freeport can help in this is to look at our parking and not require as much parking. Because remember, that is a cost for the developers and there are so many costs that we can't help with. You know, we can't help billing costs. We can't help labor costs. But we can help by providing support in allowing parking to be at a different level. Take a first step. I think that's a great idea. Now, I think as, as you said, builders aren't going to build what they can't sell. And most of our developers are saying, we'll probably still do one parking space per because we know we need that. But let's help them in a way that we can. So I really appreciate your consideration on this because it ends up being a fixed cost for them that they may be able to put into other things like pretty doors and pretty front entryways and all the architectural things that we want in our housing in downtown. So, thank you.
One simple anecdote.
Tom Wilbur again.
Pardon?
I said Tom Wilbur again, for the record. Yes.
So, and, and my opinions represent no one else's. The, but my son told me the other day, you talk about demand for housing in town, a totally new experience. Someone came in, had a vacancy in one of the apartments and someone came in, deposit and the whole thing, and six months' rent in advance. That's a real, that's a major change, I think. I think there is a definite demand out there that we can fill.
Kathleen Mead, resident here. Well, we live uptown, but we're not considered uptown. Like, we don't get the notices because we're off to the side. Counting residents up here is always a little funny to those of us who live on the outskirts, down Elm Street, Guptaal Park, over on Holbrook. It seems that we should be included. And one of the things that I'm here to talk for are people. People who want to rent apartments up here. People who depend on cars. The whole idea that people who rent these apartments are going to only be there at night is absurd because people are working days, they're working evenings, they're working nights, they're working all kinds of shifts. There's all kinds of family dynamics and family sizes. I was counting cars and driveways and there's a, a family with two. There's a truck, two small vehicles and an electric vehicle. So yes, those are individual houses, but still, it seems that you could show respect for people who you want to move in, to take care of. Everybody's talking about the developers. You're talking about, you know, how to make money out of all these people coming in. It seems that you should think about respecting them and the fact that you really can't do without a vehicle in Maine. You talk about, oh, the train station, oh, the bus. The bus is erratic. The train station is erratic. They're not anything people can depend on to get to work, even in Portland or Brunswick. There's a woman who lives in an apartment, right, here in town. She has four children. Her husband works in Lewiston. Hmm, it seems like they're going to need a, a car because you can't get to Lewiston without a vehicle. They have four children, the youngest of whom is in and out of Maine Med all the time for medical issues. Hmm, maybe she needs a car too. Yes, maybe one of them could park farther away from where they live, but it seems to make sense that you ask developers to make sure there is dedicated apartment, but dedicated parking for the people living in their apartments. It just makes sense if you respond to people versus just developers and businesses. You know, yes, there's lots of parking out there, but if you want to live somewhere, you're going to want to be able to depend on parking. You know, the whole idea that all the parking lots, so many are empty and everything. Clearly, you're not, you're not counting spots when anything is happening in town because frequently the parking lots are full. You could look at it and go, that parking lot is fine. It's wholly empty all the time. And then where did all those people come from? So think about taking this child from Maine Med, picking up some stuff, groceries, and then having to find a parking lot, a parking spot somewhere? Really, think about the people. Please don't just think about the developers and businesses. If businesses want people coming and shopping, you need to make sure developers who are building those units are making sure that there's close by parking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other comments?
Eric Smith, I live in District 2. I am responsible for managing two different parking lots in VC1 at one level or another. One is one of the very first to fill up on any given day. One is one of the last. And to state for the record, I am fully in favor of bringing as much housing to downtown as we possibly can and, and replacing parking lots that used to be housing with housing in whatever way is most beneficial to the residents we are trying to bring in, as well as the developers who need to, to bring those. My concern is, and Caroline and I spend a lot of time talking about parking, and this shared parking system, it's very hard to pull one thread and think that that's going to, it's only going to affect that one line. So my concern about this proposal is the allowance of only residential units to have a combination of shared and dedicated parking. When no one else, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but no one else is allowed to have that. You are either shared or you're dedicated. And there's no combination. And my reading of this amendment is that it would only allow residential to have that combination. And as we move into this new downtown vision and we are talking about how rapidly the downtown business landscape is changing, one of the things we're talking about is different businesses that are not businesses that people want to come and park seven blocks away because they're going to spend two or three hours in town. We're talking about businesses where people want to come buy something and leave. And as we're thinking about a downtown where we want our own residents of other parts of Freeport to be able to get to their downtown, there is going to need to be a change in, in the art, the way we think about parking that isn't people can park seven blocks away and get to where they want to go and get back to find their, their vehicle. So specifically in the parking lot that I manage that fills up all day long, at basically about 10 o'clock in the morning on any given summer day, you cannot find parking there. My organization doesn't open until 10 o'clock. So we can't, the, the patrons of my organization can't actually park in our parking lot. And they are not folks that are looking to spend several hours.
Did you tell us which one it is?
Well, so that, that parking lot is the Freeport Historical Society parking lot. That is a, a parking lot that we developed in cooperation with the town and two other property owners in the 1990s. And we are therefore locked into maintaining it with the town and those two other property owners. But we do not receive the benefit up in, in the summer in terms of who, who we are trying to attract into our own organization. But we can't put up dedicated parking signs unless we put up dedicated parking signs in all 44 spaces. So we could decide to take all 44 spaces out of shared parking and make that an island only for us, or it's shared. Or it's shared, in which case, from 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock when we are open, nobody who's coming to us can actually park there because those spaces are already full, for the most part. So, I bring all of this up just to say that it would be nice if some of our other local businesses and organizations were allowed to have shared parking and designated parking. If we could have three or four spaces that were actually reserved for folks that are coming specifically to our organization. In the same way, it'd be very nice for residential developments to be able to have some that were specifically for their residents. So, I know that's not on the agenda, but since you are introducing that possibility, I am asking you to consider that for other organizations because of all of the things that we are changing and who we are trying to bring downtown, including our own residents. Yes?
Do you see, this is, how big an impediment going forward do you see this is? Obviously, you're open at 10 and your parking spaces are full.
Yep.
So, you got a new business in the barn. And are they, how do you think this is going to impact them if we can't include you in this mix?
Well, you know, again, that is, I can't speak for that business. That opens at noon and going till 9:00 and possibly later as we get into the year. Parking certainly gets easier in the evening. And again, I think the folks that are coming, looking for a restaurant at noon are probably folks that are, you know, in town already and maybe they did park several blocks away and they're fine. Or maybe they already parked out back and they're, they've been shopping for a couple of hours and now they're having lunch. Does that answer your question? I guess I'm not, in terms of the...
I hear your concern.
The restaurant, I think they have a longer arc of their opening hours and I think it tends to balance out. But I know, you know, even though we do have dedicated ADA parking, a lot of folks that are coming to our organization are not folks that need wheelchair-accessible parking, but they're also not folks that are going to be able to park a long distance away and walk. Because, you know, as the town engineer was sharing with the town council last night, ADA is about more than just wheelchair access. It's about all kinds of people with all kinds of mobility and their ability to get to where they want to go.
So, I think this is a much bigger conversation than we can tackle tonight. It's a great point, and I know you know that. But, yeah, I think it's a really good point. I think there's a lot of math involved there.
Yeah, we just have to study, is that a big impact or a small impact?
Because everybody wants to keep talking about parking, so...
That's what we're here for.
I mean, like, into the future.
I think that's bigger. We have some uses, like Town Hall, for example. Here, we chose, because we were in office and people needed parking, we chose to not do shared parking. It's restricted. It says during daytime hours, whatever they are listed, when we're open. It's only for Town Hall business only. After hours or on the weekends, you know, the lot can be full if it's a busy day. If we have everyone... I mean, I think going to the point that Kathleen made is we know that we do have a word made. A lot of people are going to need a car. And so, we hear from developers that our parking requirement of two per space, if they don't do shared, is a limiting factor. And we know that when we all come home with a big car full of groceries, people are going to want to park on site. So, that's how we got to the shared and not shared. I think we can look at it universally. I think it's going to really be a much different conversation because suddenly, if every business is restricting universally throughout Freeport, we're really changing the way we do parking.
Yeah, will shared parking be, yeah?
The flip side is if you didn't do the shared parking, then, you know, people could buy parking lots, not, you know, off-site, within a certain distance and just say, you know, for Caroline's apartments only, or whatever it may be.
But I think that, I mean, allowing the possibility of both is really what the, you know, because you don't want 44 that are just yours. And the math changes, I understand, like, you know, if it's shared, it's maybe it's a little less. And if it's not shared, maybe it's more. But you, yeah, you want the ability to designate a certain, you know, we're fulfilling these four spaces from, you know, from restricted parking and then the rest are coming from shared at a lower rate. So, it's a complicated issue.
It is, and I don't want to send you down that rabbit hole this evening.
Yes, and we're not going down that. So...
What I simply wanted to point out is that you were introducing a brand-new part in here.
Yep.
And that is going to introduce complication because other people are going to start asking you...
And I think that's fair. I also think, and this is my personal opinion here, I also think that this is a great chance to introduce this concept. I think it's a great use case for it. I think it's the perfect time to do it. It doesn't feel unfair to me because I think it's, you know, it's a new use. It's a perfect, yeah, it's a perfect chance to try it out. But, yeah, I think your warning is very well, very well taken that we're going to, this is not the last we're going to hear of the mix.
I just want to clarify, the use is there today, the parking for...
The parking, yeah, okay, fair enough.
We're not introducing a whole new use.
Yeah, no, no, no.
And clearly, like you said, you can't just pull one string. There are going to be other priorities for us to change parking. And I think that's something that we really need to look at because it's given priority in the downtown vision plan.
Right, sorry. I meant, I meant we're changing one, yeah. I did muddy the waters, as usual. Any other public comment? I believe the public hearing is still open.
If you don't have more comment in the room, you do have some people online as well.
Oh, wow, I forgot about that. Anyone online who would like to raise his or her or their virtual hand? Give it one more moment as people wake up their computers.
No hands.
Folks here for other stuff, perhaps. Do I hear motion to close the public hearing? Moved and seconded? Excellent, all in favor? All right, public hearing is now closed. So, I guess what I'm hearing is that there's general support for lowering the requirements. There is, I think, support on the board for lowering the requirements. I think there's a great case, or a great point made about listening to the needs of the people in town. I guess my feeling on that is that that's not for the board to, I mean, I think, I think the board is trying to meet a need for people in town through this action. It is certainly not, you know, the board's intention to cater only to development. I think we're listening to, or at least, this is my personal view again, you know, listening to the vision and listening to the needs of what we're hearing from people in the town, listening to what businesses in the town would like to see so that they can better serve their customers. And so, that, to me, is serving the people of Freeport. So, that's where I come from, speaking for myself personally. Other thoughts from the board?
That's the whole point of the plan board, right, is to adhere to the comprehensive plan and listen to the people. And it certainly seems...
But I think it's a great, I think it was a great, a great point.
I'd share the point that developers will be listening to the needs of the people. And they will be figuring out whether people won't tolerate having a space, the second space, some distance away.
And I think, you know, hopefully, the goal is to promote, give the flexibility to build different kinds of units that will serve different...
That's how you get the best diversity.
And Mr. Malone's argument was pretty compelling, you know, just listening to lease rates and, I mean, it's, you know...
Just want to clarify, when we talk about them having like a second space, we're not, if they do shared parking, like, so if they need a combination on site, like, if they have 10 on site and they need 10 more, if they participate in lease parking available through the lease parking pool, there is not going to be another space in a lot somewhere that says parking for so-and-so only because it's shared. So, like any of us, if we come to town at night or whatever, we can park anywhere.
They would have to use the 200 spaces in the garage if need be.
Wherever they can park overnight.
Or wherever they can find the space, right?
Yeah.
Or is it 500?
500.
500 empty spaces in the garage?
I don't think you can park overnight either.
Oh, you can't park overnight? Well, that may be an issue.
Does anybody have any issues with the draft language as written here? Any questions, comments? Talk about it.
Typos.
Yeah, typos, anybody notice? I didn't, actually.
Nope. I have one question.
Any typos?
The only thing, I have one question.
Okay, rosemary first, sorry.
Okay, on number four, it says parking spaces, vehicles or materials, unless required and provisioned, will not be used for sale, repair, or servicing of any vehicles. What's about electric charging? Does that, is that part?
Interesting. So, I thought about actually putting something in, but I felt that was a separate conversation.
But it worried me to...
This does not include electric charging?
We don't call out electric charging. It's not a conversation we've had. We don't have a requirement. We have some, and it doesn't say, you know, electric charging for Town Hall only. So, over the years, the, however many we have, I can't remember the numbers, come ahead. We have not deducted that from the shared parking, even though you're probably not going to park there.
I think your issue is, is it going to be prohibited?
Well, that's exactly, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, the whole point of this is, they're working on your car.
You asked about dots and...
But I think that's a separate conversation. We need to look at having it.
It's a good point.
It would be beneficial to clarify that they could count towards a shared parking.
But your question is good, too. I mean, because servicing of any vehicle, you know...
My question is, would that be considered servicing by somebody sometime in the future?
We have not enforced it as being servicing. I think if we have an EV charging discussion, that's something we should clarify.
Okay, great.
Andrew had a question.
Uh, when we talk about shared parking, picking up on Kathleen's point, is there going to be a distance requirement for shared parking?
There's not currently.
There is not currently.
And there used to be for residential, I mean, for commercial, it would be 600 feet from the doorstep. And I guess we did away with that.
There is a requirement if you, you could meet it off-site, if you, like, not shared, off-site. I think it's still in here, 600 feet. You could, if you're not doing shared parking, you could own a lot within 600. But the shared parking, as we looked at last month, you can own this and have a parking lot or meet it down the street. So, this wouldn't be proposing to change that.
Except people could still, even though you got the shared parking over there, people could use the shared parking over here.
Yes, shared parking, you can park wherever you want.
Yeah, that's the point. I think if you put a threshold where you have to develop within 500 feet of your allocated shared parking, I think that would, you know, defeat the purpose.
Well, yeah, it's, shared parking is not...
Right, if they found the shared parking elsewhere, it wouldn't matter if you said it was nearby because people can use whatever space they want.
Until that one's developed.
Right, this is the danger over the long term.
They can't lease it.
That's been my point right along. Where's the tipping point? That's all.
Right, I just think, yeah.
We know we're not there now.
No, I realize that.
So, making a decision that can't be, you know, the assumption is the market will correct it.
I just want to clarify, the shared parking is overseen by the municipality because my understanding is back in the day, when the municipality wasn't involved, you know, someone would have a spot and lease it to three people, and then we weren't really meeting the parking. So, anyone that has surplus parking approaches the town and says, hey, I have surplus parking. I'm going to keep it open, maintain it, strip it, share it, all that. We want to enter it into the pool. So, when somebody comes in, they say, okay, who has parking available? Right now, it's the town and the Historical Society. They go to those owners and see what they want to negotiate. But by putting it in the pool, whoever puts it in the pool is, you know, tying it up for...
The town still takes a cut for managing that, right?
Yeah, so they changed it. There's very, I don't have the leasing numbers because it goes through finance. Eric might be able to clarify. There's very little leasing of parking spaces going on. And I believe nonprofits now are exempt. They, it was 5%. They don't pay a fee, like, the, I can't remember when, Robert might remember, but years ago, not that long ago, the planning board and council also changed the parking requirement for churches so they don't have a parking requirement. And when they did that, some of the nonprofits approached the town to get rid of that 5% overhead. But again, there's very limited leasing of parking spaces going on just because the demand's not there and we do have a lot of vacancies.
Can I ask one more question? What's the terms of, if you enter a parking lot into shared parking, can you rescind it? What's the length of time of that commitment?
Oh, there, it's...
Year to year?
A pending agreement, so some small businesses will come in and do shorter terms or...
Oh, they could have a five-year agreement.
They said all but one spot will, the leases will come to term in the next 10 years. There's only one parking spot, right? I saw that somewhere.
Oh.
Oh, that one, that might have been an old one, but there are various...
Maybe that was 2016.
They're various, they're various, I understand.
Like, any contract is what you negotiate for terms and, like, then pricing.
So...
But here we are saying that the residences could get shared parking. What's the length of time of the lease that they'd be required to have that shared parking? You see what I'm saying? Like, could they...
Yeah, I think it's what you were saying. They have to meet their requirement continuously. If they choose to do a five-year lease with you and then when that expires, go out, or before that expires, go out and renegotiate with someone else. But they have to meet their parking requirement. I believe it says in here you can revoke the certificate of occupancy if they're not doing that.
So, they might have to build themselves a garage across town and enter it in the shared...
Like any commercial use downtown that's getting into the lease pool, they're making...
A commitment.
A business decision and a commitment. And if for some reason you can't lease it, then you're going to have a problem.
Right.
So, I'm on board with this direction, but I keep thinking of the scenario where we get some large projects that are going to permanently remove parking spots in the existing lots. So, will that be dealt with on a project review basis? Or would that be a tipping point where we would have to come back here and reconsider that?
Here's my theory on this situation.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow him on that.
Basically, where's the tipping point at which you have, say, you have three big projects that come in and want to build on parking spaces that are currently part of the shared parking pool? I think there's a point at which shared parking becomes scarce, shared parking becomes expensive, and now the people who own the lots say, well, I'm not going to develop this. It's worth more as a parking lot. And that is what is regulating this whole thing in a future scenario, in my mind.
Or it does go through and they build, they build on parking lots to the point where we're losing a lot of parking spots at once or within a couple of years.
We could lose a lot of parking today, you know, as I said, there's hundreds of extra spaces. I definitely think it's going to be a change in people's patterns. You know, we all have places that we like to park in Freeport. And as they get redeveloped, we might need to find a new favorite parking spot.
So, my question is, if that occurs aggressively, what's going to be the process? Are we going to have to come back here and rethink what we're doing today? Or will the project review level take care of that?
No, project review won't take care of it. You guys are the only ones that can write, even the council, the only ones that can write the plan.
So, we'd have to come back and say, all right, no more shared parking. Or we'd have to come back and say, all right, shared parking requirement goes up to four. Or something, and onsite parking is X.
I see this as an incremental step, you know, the vision said lower zero and look at all your parking. So, I think, you know, in a couple of years, or maybe sooner, depending how things happen, we'll have to reevaluate the whole thing, not just the residential. You know, we changed it 18 or 19 and we're just seeing the redevelopment now, so it hasn't...
There are a lot of factors in, yeah.
Parking's never going to go away. It's going to be a conversation.
And that's why I think I support moving this forward. And I think, you know, the question that we need, we still need to address is, or maybe I'm the only one who thinks we need to address it, is, is one low enough? Or do we take the requirement that we've heard from a few people and go down to three-quarters of a spot for the shared parking requirement?
I want to stay at one.
Okay.
I would also like to stay at one.
Okay.
I would, the .75, I would go down to that.
So would I.
Yeah.
So would I. I also feel like we haven't even talked about the climate crisis and, like, with that facing us. And we're going to have to be moving to a world where we are not all using cars. And that is going to be a reality. I mean, so I think we should just be a little bit braver.
Yeah, I think that's...
To say one thing that, based on what Wayne said and then you mentioned, I would say, you know, I'm a cautious person. So, we do want to be cautious because we have seen this before. I'm sure Andy could weigh in. Freeport had yo-yoed back in the day with the parking requirement. And that's why some people are non-conforming. They're not conforming to a different level. They don't provide it, and so...
Took all the parking off the street?
Yeah, it's not, we want to be cautious. We don't want to just be like, oh, we'll just up it again because then you're going to have all these people that are not going to conform and then we're going to have...
But we're not going to zero, Caroline.
No, no, I'm just saying, I meant to say that in response to the past conversation. Like, we want to, whatever you decide, we're not just, if it's...
We're considering, could there be a snowball effect? And I believe that there won't be, but I don't want to be reckless. And I feel like if we see what hap, you know, all of a sudden, we could both be having less parking than is required by... We know that residents need a parking space, and that I will certainly agree with the speaker. And so, there's going to be at least one car per, maybe the second car, they could park when, look for a space. But there's always going to be one. And if all the parking lots go away at the same time that we have less than one, I don't think that will be a problem. I think the market will solve it, but I don't want to be...
Yeah, you don't want to be holding that back.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all a balance, but right now, the problem we were looking at, that's more, you know, the most serious problem is not the parking, it's the development. And I think we heard testimony that going to .75 might make a difference in the minds of some developers. So, at this point, given the balance, given where we are, I would, I would support that.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's, the crisis is also, I mean, you heard the statistics of the sales decreasing by, you know, 40 to 70% by the rent... by, you know, 40 to 70%, by the rents decreasing by 70%. I mean, this is what we're facing, not parking right now. I, I also support incremental approach, and .75 feels incremental to me. Zero would feel reckless.
Yep.
So here's a procedural question for you, Caroline. If part of the board wants to, and I haven't done the math here, the simple math, admittedly, but if part of the board thinks sports at .75 is the way to go, and another part of the board thinks that one is the way to go, is there like a simple majority that says, no, it's going to be .75, or do we...
You'd have to vote, and it'd be, if somebody...
Would you have to amend this first?
Somebody could introduce an amendment.
Somebody, yeah, would, you know, make amendment.
Well, but the motion would, the motion could make that amendment.
Yep, and then if you didn't get four votes, it would fail.
Okay, I see now. Dumb question.
If you were going to change from what was printed here, though, you're right, you would need to work it into...
Into the motion, yeah. Okay.
What about a new amendment?
Or amend this, and then make a motion that...
Well, since I think we have four votes to go to.
It looks like you have your four. Is there anybody who would like to make that motion? I know it's a...
We have some draft motions to start. It does, again, for the board to make a recommendation for a change, you need to find it in general harmony with the comp plan. So we crafted something, but these are your motions, so you craft them as you see fit. And again, these do not acknowledge any change or lowering, so it will be a good base if you want to take one and pass it down, sorry, forgot to find them out earlier, that you could use, but somebody would need to make it unique to reflect what the board wants to do.
This is item two, not item three. At the bottom, not the top.
Sorry, that was...
Yeah, so the second motion.
Yes.
Yeah, you're good.
Definitely.
And then whoever makes the motion would just need to make that clarification, assuming that .75 is the desired route.
Thank you.
Best part of being chair, if anybody is curious.
What's a...
Not, not being allowed to make motions.
I'm always allowed to make the motions.
I nominated Wayne.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I'm just looking for the language of, the concise language. I mean, you don't want me to read this whole thing, right?
Well, no, I think, once we start, you can have it.
I think you, yeah, I think you do.
And you just, yeah.
But then you have to...
Where did it say one here?
It probably doesn't. So you just have to say, at the end, you would just say, you know, with, with the added, with the reduction from...
And I would also say that we revisit this, with other priorities to do with parking.
Yeah, I think you'd want to clarify this as the language presented on 8-3-20-22 Planning Board Meeting, and I think you'd want to say, as amended with the following change, or something like that in there.
You got to reference a section.
In the precise place and language.
You got to reference a section that's changing.
Yeah, so if you guys are, if you're talking about lowering the number, you would be under five, so I'm writing this down, 514B8C, you would lower the multifamily requirement to .75 parking space per residential unit, that's for shared. And then under D for not shared, are you saying you would want to drop it down to one?
Oh, we didn't talk about that.
Yeah, I think we would keep it at one.
Yeah. I, I think, I think that one's point, 1.25 right now, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have one shared, 1.25, not shared.
Oh, you're thinking reduce that one, too?
Oh, I thought we were...
I don't know, I'm, I'm asking the question to you guys.
Does that, so is it, is it, you go from 1.25 for non-shared and one for shared, down to one and .75, or do you keep the 1.25 and just drop the shared parking?
Yeah, it was my understanding that was one, 1.25 to one.
Okay, so drop both of them, in other words.
Yeah, is that everyone else's understanding?
That's, yeah, that's, I honestly hadn't thought that much about that one, but yeah, I think that makes sense to drop both, if we're going to drop one.
Keep it as is. You know, we did do some comparison. There's not an exact science to how they've done the shared and not shared ratios.
I think you're more quick than I am, actually.
Did you get that number?
Yeah, so I'm going to say 1.25.
There's, and that's, it's 5, 514B...
8 dot C.
Yeah.
C and D.
And D.
514.
D.
Off-street parking.
Dot C.
B dot 8 dot C, and then dot D.
Yeah.
You have 514B8C.
Yep.
For shared, correct?
Yep.
Yep, and then D for non-shared.
Yep.
C, 8 and C, all of that. I'm getting very confused by the numbers.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. And just to clarify, this keeps the single in two-family as-is today. We're just talking about the multifamily. So it's B8.
So that should be noted in...
We're in this table.
It's already in there. I was just clarifying.
Oh, okay.
We're sharing parking.
Yeah.
And then you just need to single out.
The requirement today...
So this is...
The requirement today, is it 1.25 for a one-bedroom?
Nope, this is not in the VC1, so not shared, 14D.
Yeah, and then C is...
Two spaces, so you're keeping your...
C is shared, D is not shared.
For the most part.
Oh, not in VC1.
A lot of people read it that way.
I got it, got it, got it. So right now, it is two for a one-bedroom.
Exactly.
For anything, yeah.
For anything, it's two.
Not shared.
Right, so the 1.25 is still a significant reduction on that.
Yeah, one or 1.25, whatever you guys decide.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. I will go ahead with this to try. Be it ordered that the Freeport Planning Board recommends that the Freeport Town Council adopt the proposed amendment to the Freeport zoning ordinance Section 104 definitions and Section 514, off-street parking and loading, to include the language presented on August 3, 2022 Planning Board Meeting, which clarifies the definition of shared parking, provides for allowing multiple family dwellings in the VC1 zoning district to meet the parking requirement through a combination of shared and non-shared parking, and lowers the parking requirement for multiple family dwellings in the VC1 zoning district. The Planning Board would like to make an amendment to lower the shared parking requirement as noted in Section 514C, from one parking space to .75 for shared parking, and...
Five point, 514 dot B, what is it?
Oh, sorry, 514.
8 dot C.
Yeah, so it's 514 dot B dot 8 dot C.
Okay, 514, thank you, 514B dot 8 dot C, for shared parking to be reduced from one space to .75, and for 514B dot 8 dot D, for not shared parking, to be reduced from 1.25 to one. The Planning Board finds that this amendment is consistent with the Freeport comp plan of replicating the traditional pattern of New England Village neighborhoods, allowing a variety of neighborhoods and housing types, providing flexible regulations to minimize negative environmental impacts, improving the walkability of neighborhoods so as to encourage community health, promote a variety of alternatives to the automobile. And I would add to provide a positive impact to the economic decline we've seen in downtown to encourage development and to encourage more people to live, work, and play in our community.
Thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Did you want to have that revisited?
Oh, and that this, it should be revisited, that we monitor it closely, and that we realize this one change will have ripple effects. We realize that it means we need to look at other parking priorities that the public brought up today, and so we'll be keeping a close eye on it.
Now do I hear a second?
Second.
Same second applies. All right, all in favor? All right, so that one will be sent.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Oh, sorry, I just assumed it was implied, I guess. You know, honestly...
It's the first time in a while, we're pretty...
First time in my, first, maybe second time. There was one time that somebody else was opposed. Anyway, it's the second time in my tenure on the planning board, it hasn't been a unanimous vote, which I think speaks to a good debate, and I would like to thank everyone for this.
And I would clarify that I do support lowering the parking requirement.
Oh, I do, too. I do, too. Go one.
Yes, yes. And I think, I think, yes, so we're all still friends, that's the bottom line.
Can we just clarify for Sharon? Sharon, did you get that motion?
I got most of it, but I'll fill in it.
5A, 2A, with Mitch and Andy. Nice.
All right, thanks again for the input from the public, et cetera, and all opinions, being welcome. Yeah, I know. Anybody, yeah, we could take like a two-minute break for water or something like that.
I would like to refill my water very much.
I need some water.
Yeah, there's a water cooler in the kitchen.
It's time all out. Is a water cooler in the kitchen?
Yep, walk in the kitchen and on the right. I swear, I've had that running all day.
Wasn't my wife...
It's a treat, Cecilia. It's because we go, they go longer now. Is it hot sitting down here?
She was putting her horse down, because she took off the meds, and she went down to Aunt's house, it's just, just standing, they couldn't move, such pain, it's a real great thing.
It was 27, 28.
Even now, I keep it in mind, because everything is, I mean, everything is bad, it's right, everything is, I just can't bring myself to go out.
All the temples, the red doors.
All right.
All right.
Well, I think you were right, but it does seem...
Well, I think you were right, but it does seem...
Yeah, it'd be weird.
As somebody who has turned all buckets of water out of my basement, that are draining out of a heat pump, I know very well that my heat pumps are...
I'm actually, whether or not, you see, of course, the girls have a dry setting, which is all they're doing.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I've always heard heat pump guys say it's better to just run the AC and then use the dry setting, because it's efficient overall, but, well, it's basically just like, it's not, it's not blowing the fan, like, it's just, it's just circulating the refrigerant, but it's not using the fan the same way, so it's not like providing the same amount of air circulation, it doesn't cool down as much, but it's like, if you're going to run it in, it may as well cool your air down.
Efficiency mainsends around stuff saying, if you want to save electricity, do the dry before you go to the...
Yeah, little fans up here.
Yeah, I haven't used the dry setting yet, but...
I've been using it like every night, because it hasn't been hot enough to...
Mm-hmm.
...heat the AC, but...
An ice machine would be nice, yeah.
It's unbelievable, I have a very, because I have to carry out the water, it's like, from R2...
I don't think you can fix it.
Head units, I would say, it's like...
She has a fan.
Oh, my goodness.
It's going to tie into the basic drainage system, but I haven't done it yet, so, the...
I don't know where.
You're not talking about a heat pump?
Yeah, it drains, but it drains, because we couldn't mount them on the outside of the house.
We're not the first ones to have this.
No, we do, but it's piped through, the, the line sets come up through the house, and then the condensate drains back down through, the same way the line set does, but it just drains in the basement. Yeah, so it's like 10 gallons of water every two or three days. It's awesome. It's clean water.
You drink it right from there?
I haven't done that yet.
Doesn't have to be on that high. It's loud.
Loud. That's great. I know.
That was sad.
That's very nice.
Yeah, very nice. We're happy. I don't know about those guys out there.
I don't know how far it goes down, but...
This is a COVID-sensitive chocolate.
I like how it's just like a huge bar.
That's how I always buy it. The problem is, I eat the huge bar, that's why I'm trying to get rid of them.
Yeah, no, this is good, it looks very good.
Offloading some of them.
All right, maybe the next one will be a little bit...
All right.
Doubt it.
I know where everything is.
All right.
Nobody will.
The board is back.
Sorry, I just have a little maintenance issue, I'll be right there.
Totally fine. Anybody else read the lease?
I didn't.
Parking standards? On item five, the third sentence, makes, I cannot make any sense of it.
There was one I didn't understand.
It says, "If the applicant chooses not to enter into a priority list, becomes eligible for a lease, and the previous applicant may remain on the list." It makes, it makes no, I've read it like 10 times, I cannot make any sense of it.
He's looking at it. We had a malfunction of the water pump, so if you go to the restroom, be careful, and be careful, if it's not dry.
Functioning water fountain?
Was that my fault, because I used it?
Don't blame it on you. We have a glass of water in the kitchen.
Nobody can blame the parking reduction on you.
I'm just so glad, I didn't know there's glasses of water we could just...
Blame it on the new person, right?
Yeah.
Are we back in session?
We're back in session. So you just still have people online as well?
I think you're just missing a word in there.
All right, let's move along.
I just couldn't figure out what the word was.
I think you're missing the word button there somewhere, you know?
What, I'm sorry, did you find a typo?
No, it's not.
Nothing wrong with it.
Button becomes eligible for a lease.
No, not on. Oh, are you looking at the lease parking standards?
I think you're missing a word in there.
Yeah, there's a, there's a sentence that I couldn't figure out, but I think Andrew solved the issue for me.
Well, maybe.
Maybe.
The other, the other thing, I want to move on from parking, but the woman, it was a Kathleen, who is in there, I think she made a really good point of, she felt that some of the residential areas weren't notified. Is that something that Caroline...
Because they're not VC1.
So, well, we have to draw the line somewhere, I will say. We post our agendas online, we email them to probably about 100 people. Actually, my email, I think, is up to like 140, including the boards. Do you remember how many butters you had with the VC1 by chance? I can go without. So the planning board has a policy...
Yeah, there's a, there's a sentence that I couldn't figure out, but I think Andrew solved the issue for me.
Well, maybe.
Maybe.
The other, the other thing I want to move on from parking, but the woman, it was Kathleen, who is in there, I think she made a really good point of, she felt that some of the residential areas weren't notified. Is that something that Caroline...
Because they're not VC1.
So...
Just too tricky.
Well, we have to draw the line somewhere, I will say. We post our agendas online, we email them to probably about 100 people. Actually, my email, I think, is up to like 140, including the boards. Do you remember how many butters you had with the VC1 by chance? So the planning board has a policy, like, when you do, you have a whole, whole, whole variety of policy, but like when you do certain things, you notify just the zone, and sometimes you notify the zone and everyone that touches the zone. I can't remember in which case, but I mean, that was over 100 people, and it was hundreds for one of the discussion items. So you could amend your policy. We do a lot of notification, but again, we've got a, you have to draw the line somewhere.
That makes sense. I just wanted to ask.
Believe that these projects will affect those places.
Yeah, they're in a different zone.
Different zone.
Well, no, but just because, but I mean, they're close, but it's not, people aren't going to be parking on Elm Street.
Yeah, I would say like the, like some of the neighbors back there, there is a zone change, so some of them, like, they'd have to drive through the parking lots and the areas to get back to their, their residences, and they are kind of tucked in the back there. But again, when we do it, we do it pretty much all by map, so we do kind of need like a, a fair boundary that the computers, since it's smarter than humans, can calculate.
Not smarter, just faster, yeah, just faster. The, uh...
But yeah, we can look at that at some other point in time, too.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting, it's an interesting point. I think that put the parking apartments in the zones over there are different anyway than...
They are, yeah.
So I mean, I think it's an interesting point.
Okay.
Did we do a budding too for that one, or just the cannabis? You don't have to go back and check, I just couldn't remember. Just the VC1.
All right. Item number...
Thank you.
Three, I have no idea where my... Robert, um, item number three is a public hearing, proposed amendments to section 104, definitions of the Freeport zoning ordinance. This will be a public hearing pertaining to adding a proposed definition for, quote, "increase in nonconformity of a structure." Uh, this definition is being proposed as a result of the planning board discussion made at the June 2022 Planning Board Meeting for text amendments, um, to section 202.c.c.1, which regards nonconforming buildings. It would allow for an expansion of an existing nonconforming structure if certain conditions are met, basically bringing the standard that currently exists in the Shoreland District into the rest of the town. Is that fair to say?
Right, and so I think it was Wayne that, when we were talking about it, he said, geez, it would be really nice to have a definition to clarify it, um, and somebody else had made that suggestion, so I, I have not forwarded the June recommendation to the council because when I looked at it, I was like, oh, it makes sense to look at it as a whole package, do the, have you guys consider the definition that somebody requested, Wayne requested would be helpful. Um, so if you took action on this tonight, I would then forward the nonconformity language with the definition, but essentially what we did is Cecilia had taken the definition right out of the Shoreland zoning, and then we took references out to the Shoreland zoning things, like the water setback, stream setback, you know, that stuff. So this would apply, this would be in the zoning ordinance outside of the Shoreland zone, but mirror that definition as closely as possible, as relevant, if that makes sense.
Any questions on this one?
You still do have people online. Just clarify.
Do I hear a motion to open a public hearing? In a second?
Second.
Excellent, all in favor? That one's unanimous. The public is welcome to pose any questions, comments, concerns, anything else. Including, we'll, we'll open it up to online as well, since...
If anyone online wants to comment, they can raise their hand.
We tried. I mean, it's pretty basic here.
Yeah. All right, we'll give about 10 more seconds. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any thoughts, questions, comments from the board?
I would have a language, uh, suggestion. Um, the second to the last line where it says extends no closer to the space standards, I would change that to no closer to the boundary specified in the zoning district.
The reason it has space standards is because that's terminology used throughout the zoning ordinance, like for things like setbacks, lot coverage, it refers to them as space standards.
Because it can, and it can also apply to cover lot coverage, which isn't so much a boundary, right?
But just grammatically, being closer to a standard doesn't really make sense, does it?
Um, well, it's not always a boundary line, like you said, they could be nonconform, that one of the space standards, you know, could be coverage, they could be nonconforming for coverage, like they cover more than 90% or whatever, which wouldn't really...
So it collectively refers to anything that is...
I see your...
Space standard.
Space standard.
I see. Point, though, because like, you, you could say a structure may be expanded laterally, provided that the expansion extends no closer to the boundary specified in the zoning district and does not go over the lot coverage or something, because if it goes over the lot coverage, that's a separate...
That's exactly what I was proposing.
Yeah, that's a separate issue, because if it goes over the lot coverage, you can't do it, no matter how...
Let me just, um, pull up the ordinance.
Then we have to make sure that there's no other...
Yeah, then we don't, I mean, I guess it's fine to be slightly different than the Shoreland, but this was based off the DEP definition that you guys just adopted. Sorry, I'm just cross-referencing two terms here before you consider...
Yeah, I mean, when I agree that it's clearer, I also am somewhat wary of...
Yeah, so they, like, space standards can be lot area, road frontage, building height, setbacks, I'm telling you all types of, land per dwelling unit, lot width.
There's a definition of space standards in there?
There is not a definition.
See, that, that's...
It calls, it's what we reference, all of those things together.
There should be, especially because it's referenced to so many different items.
You know, we have space standards for...
It collectively includes all of these. It should just be a definition.
I agree.
I think we have an agenda item for next month.
There you call him something else.
We have a lot of that in the ordinance, which we think we always catch them, and then we start reading it again, be like, oh, here we call it this, here we call it that, um...
Would that solve the, if we added a space standards definition?
Can...
Um, I still think, just in terms of, I mean, you want it to be readable by somebody who doesn't have the technical knowledge that Caroline has.
Could you repeat for me again what, how, what you would do, so I can look at it?
I would say extends no closer to the boundaries specified in the zoning district.
And I guess your point is, we're only talking really about boundaries, right?
Well, because there's other, like, building height isn't so much a bound, well, I guess it is a boundary in a sense, but...
Is it, is it a boundary? That, yeah.
Do you have limits and set of boundaries?
But it is a, there's more than just boundaries, right? What about lot coverage?
Yeah.
It's still a limit.
Well, it's a limit, but it's not a boundary.
It's a...
Talking about a structure expanding laterally, specifically.
Maybe, maybe horizontally.
That's true.
vertically.
Well, it says laterally.
It says laterally, yeah.
Right, but let's just say they meet, they could extend, but if they don't meet, like, the lot coverage...
Right.
Coverage is the problem, they could not.
They could extend but not go over coverage, or they could, um, I'm hesitant on the fly without reviewing the entire ordinance to introduce new terminology that we're not using already.
How about boundary to the boundary or other requirements in the space standards?
Other space standards, to the, no closer to the boundary or other, you know, or...
Yeah, I think that would help a little bit.
To the boundary or other space standards.
Well, it's not necessarily closer to other state-based standards.
Right, so here we're talking about, for example, reduction in setback distance, increase in lot coverage, increase in height.
And it says all that up there.
Yeah.
To, to the space standards referenced above. I mean, is that it?
Well, I think you'd really want to do the zoning district in case one didn't have a requirement for something.
I think that, I, I see your point, Wayne, I think it is hard to read, but...
Space standards as referenced above of the zoning.
I also feel like, yeah, I feel like we have somebody for whom this is a time-sensitive issue.
You have a, you have a couple people that have approached just adding on.
Yeah. I think we, I think we forward this, and this is me personally, forward it, and, um...
Fix the language.
Yeah, and if somebody keeps saying, I don't understand this at all, then maybe we...
I think unfortunately, like, when we do all this, it always makes sense, and that's how we find out what needs to be clarified by using, applying it.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Yeah.
Um, again, this is, provides consistency.
Yep. Yep. So I, I approve it as is.
Good point, though.
Yeah.
Okay, in light of that, is there anyone who would like to take a, a crack at this motion?
I can. It's basically just reading this proposed motion, right? Nothing's being changed.
Being changed, and as long as you agree that it is consistent in the, with the comprehensive plan in the way.
Yeah, okay. Uh, be it ordered, the Freeport Planning Board recommends that the Freeport Town Council adopt the proposed amendment to the Freeport zoning ordinance, section 104. Definitions do include the language presented on August 3, 2022, Planning Board meeting, which adds an increase in nonconformity of a structure definition in order to ensure consistency in interpretation of its meaning. The Planning Board finds that this amendment is consistent with the Freeport Comprehensive Plan of making Freeport a livable community for growing families in affordable residential places.
Wait, a second?
Second.
That one goes to Andrew. Is that right? For the record. Um, all in favor? Excellent. All right. This one.
Four.
You were right. Item...
Please, Dan.
Hold on.
No, that's just for the next...
Oh, this is for, this is a exhibit for the next one.
Yep, so item number four is a continued discussion on the possible uses of cannabis manufacturing and processing and cannabis cultivation in appropriate zoning districts for such uses. We've been talking about this for several months now. Think we have, or not I think, we do have some draft language here, which is great progress, and I think hopefully we're closing in on a public hearing and moving beyond this one, although see how tonight's discussion goes, uh, my personal preference would be to try to move on from this.
So before you guys dig in, can I just give a little background? We had to do a lot of notification for this. We notified everyone in all the zones in a budding because we were looking at adding a new use. So you do have some people in the room, you have some people online, you got a couple letters. Um, this is in response to something the council asked us to look at. So you guys have been talking about this. This is not a public hearing, it's not final language, it's just more of a continued discussion, but because after the last meeting, you talked about specific zones, your policy requires that we make people aware that you're talking about it, um, and then we would notify them if, when you go to a public hearing. So Cecilia put together the language based upon your feedback and just gave you a handout. Um, at the past meetings, I would say if you go through this tonight and you guys have consensus on which zones and what standards you want to incorporate, then we would kind of disappear with this issue for a little bit, because we would have to make associated performance standards, like a whole nother section of things that have to go just for cannabis, like odor mitigation, if there's special lighting, other standards. So if you come to consensus on where you want to see it, there's still another step in the standards that we would need to develop, and we would probably bring it back to you as a complete package at that point to review and then go to a public hearing.
That makes sense.
Just to set up the background.
I do have one language suggestion here, the, um, the first section cannabis cultivation facility, and then the second one cannabis manufacturing and processing facility. So it's my understanding that whatever in the second one is, um, not included in the first, they're mutually exclusive, correct?
They are exclusive, but you could have two of those things in one. They're two separate uses, just like retail and storage, but you could have them
Okay, so...
in one facility under different licenses.
Why is it like, why is that?
Let me just finish the, my, my point is that the second, um, the second one says what it does not include, it does not include cultivation or testing, but testing was not mentioned in the first one, so where does testing come from, and where should it be?
I'll have Cecilia walk you through it, because she had done a lot of the research and crafting on...
Can we start with, um, with Cecilia and then we get to go to specific questions? That's a good question.
Some language to, you know, just get your, um, to think about and reflect upon, which is what's in front of you, um, so it's borrowed from the state, you know, it's kind of, some of the language was borrowed from the state, so that's why it would be there.
So should testing be part of what's included in cannabis cultivation facility, or? My basic question was, you know, these are two distinct types of facilities, so...
There would be like three types of facilities, you know, one would be, like, the state recognizes...
Just, just in terms of the language that we're presenting here, if, if the second one does not include testing, does that mean the first one should include testing?
No.
No, it's a separate use.
Are you saying that the state talks about three separate uses, that testing is a separate one?
Well, the state has those four, you know, types of uses. So there's the retail, and then there's cultivation, and then there's manufacturing, and then there's testing. So most towns that don't allow retail, but allow cultivation and manufacturing, usually also allow testing. So when we're borrowing language from, you know, other towns, and I think with the definitions, it's something that I would definitely ask, um, the review of the attorney to see if she thinks it's appropriate.
Do you mean, like, that there should be a separate, a third thing for testing then?
So just to clarify, the directive from the council was for the planning board to consider these two specific uses and land use standards. You were not asked to consider testing. But I think if Wayne's point is, why are we calling it out on one but not the other, we might want to cross-reference, it's not allowed for either.
And is there anything different about, what, what happens in testing that makes it different? Why wouldn't...
It's a whole different...
Yeah, I believe, I believe testing is just more about research, and there's not, um, and the little brief knowledge that I have on the subject, which is not much, but my understanding is that there's not much, you know, there's not many testing facilities out there, but it's more like a laboratory.
So under cannabis cultivation facility, that should also say it does not include testing?
Yeah, I don't know if it would be necessary. I think we could confirm with the town attorney to see what she thinks would be the most appropriate definition.
Cecilia, do you have other stuff to bring?
Yeah, so we, this is about the seventh time that you've been meeting to either learn about workshop or discuss cannabis manufacturing and processing, or I mean, manufacturing and cultivation. From the last discussions, we, um, you came to the conclusion, or at least gave direction, that 1,000 feet was an appropriate distance separation, um, from cannabis-related uses from schools and licensed childcare facilities. The other thing that you agreed on or seemed to recommend is that, um, that the cultivation facility should be limited to indoor only, so we crossed out outdoor cultivation. And you also discussed how, from a land use perspective, manufacturing and processing uses and warehouse and storage uses, as we currently define it in our zoning ordinance, were comparable to cannabis cultivation and manufacturing, and therefore, that's why we're kind of looking at these standards for those different zones. I think, um, it's for discussion purposes only, it's not a draft in any way. So, you know, the purpose of bringing this to you is so that you see the, the, of these different zones, um, which are the zones that allow both of these uses, the purpose of the zone, to see if this use, these new two uses are appropriate, um, and then the standards that we have for those. So would it be helpful for those who might have not been following this, for me to reiterate which zones that allow both uses that we're discussing? Nope. Okay. Um, so one caveat here is that in the medium-density districts, A and B, one of the, um, the most restricted standard for, um, for... one of the, the most restricted standard for, for those two uses, the manufacturing and processing and warehouse and storage. For warehouse and storage facility, it would actually limit the, the size of the facility to 200, I mean 2,500 square feet of gross floor area on place, on lots that are less than three acres. And in lots that are three acres or more, you know, then it kind of adds up. So this standard was put in place for basically storage facilities. And I think historically, the town wanted to limit them on that, on those zones. So the reason why, as you can see in the language that I put here for you to reflect, that I did not include that more restrictive standard, the standard that is used for warehouse and storage, is that if we were to use that, then we would be making the currently existing cultivation facilities nonconforming. So on the MDA and MDB, the, the standard for manufacturing and processing would be that the size of the, the facility maximum of 10,000 square feet of gross floor area.
Then can I just clarify one thing? I feel like it might be hard for people on Zoom to be following this conversation. So I just want to clarify that what is up on the screen that I think they can see on Zoom is the zoning districts that the planning board is considering potentially allowing these two cannabis uses. So MDA, MDB are kind of on Route One North. Commercial One is Route One South. Commercial Four is Desert Road. The industrial would be Lower Main Street and out on Desert Road.
And we came to this by the zones in which both uses were already permitted.
Yes.
Yeah. So I just want to, for the rest of the board, repeat the conversation, a little bit of the conversation that Cecilia and I had yesterday on this subject. And I, because I'm not sure when we had our last conversation, that everybody understood the effect of the conversation that we had, which Cecilia is basically, I think, undone, undone because I think he thought it didn't quite make sense. And so we were looking for where was warehousing allowed, then this should be allowed. Where was manufacturing allowed, then this should be allowed. But, and then we said we should abide by the most restrictive standards of those things. But I think what we intended was that these are basically manufacturing and processing facilities, more than they are warehouses. And I think our assumption was that if a manufacturing and processing facility is allowed, then this would be allowed. If a manufacturing and processing facility was not allowed, but a warehouse was allowed, this would still be allowed, but it would be under the warehouse rules. The issue is the warehouse rules are tighter than the manufacturing and processing facility rules. You can have a bigger manufacturing and processing facility than you can have a warehouse. Nobody seems to know why that's so. It's historical.
It's on those districts too.
What?
I think it's, is it only on the MD districts?
Freeport historically, Andy can weigh in, and I know he has some history, has done things to, I think, limit self-storage in certain parts of town. So some area we have size limitations.
So that's.
We have setback limitations.
Yeah, setback limitations.
Which don't make much sense.
Right. It doesn't seem to make much sense. But the, but based on what we said, go to the most restrictive standards, then, and then if Cecilia did what we said, the warehouse rules would apply if both warehouses. And I don't think that's what we meant. I think we were imagining there might be some area where warehouse is allowed, manufacturing wasn't allowed, and then they could do it like a warehouse.
So you say we should adhere.
I think we should just get rid of warehouse and just say it's manufacturing.
Based on the public comment that we received.
Well, we could open it up to public comment, but yeah, I mean, that's what we would do. But that's my proposal to clean that up.
I think my take on it, and this does not make my take correct certainly, but my take on it was that the idea was to be restrictive, given that this is a sensitive use. And I know we've identified some, you know, there have been some questions about, okay, why is it a sensitive use and should it be? But I think the reality remains that for a lot of people, it is a sensitive use. So given that, then using the more restrictive, and because there were some zones in which manufacturing and processing was allowed and warehousing wasn't, and then vice versa, I think we, we went for zones in which both of them were allowed. And then it seemed like using the more restrictive of the two, at least to me, this is my interpretation of it, would allow us to be, have a good starting point for being, you know, relatively restrictive. I think the public comment is good that, you know, yeah, we don't necessarily want to make every existing operator nonconforming.
Well, I'm not sure we realized that the warehouse standards were so much tighter than the manufacturing.
Yeah, I was.
And so we were actually saying that they'd have to be half size or less than half size to abide by both.
Yeah, right. And I don't, I don't think any, I don't think any of us think that, that this is similar. I think the comparison to warehousing was not that it is like a similar use in terms of function. It's more like you drive by one of these things, it looks kind of like a warehouse. So that's the, you know, the, the idea in regulating it more tightly as a warehouse was, this is the perception of it and as you are driving by. And so the standards that apply to warehouses might reasonably.
It was more like that's the places where it belongs.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
But I'm not sure that we meant according to warehouse standards.
Yeah, they, someone.
You're making a false assumption that it's, a warehouse is a thing. They happen to rent warehouses because it's cheap space and it's big.
Right. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Like tell her, I mean, it's sort of, it ends up in warehouses because.
Right. You need a lot of space.
It fits in the zone, it, it's older buildings, they have to be owned outright. They can't be alone on them. So they end up like down a bit where I get my stuff. One guy didn't make his rent, so he's out. But, you know, they're still, they're in a warehouse because it's far enough away from everything, it's in the right zone. That doesn't mean these guys go around looking for warehouses because that just happens to be a space that's available, I assume. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, but that's driven the price of warehouses up too. You know, because they can pay more rent. So, you know. But it's, it's reaching a tipping point, I think. I mean.
I just want to clarify the two we have because some of that's exactly what I was just going to say. You know, I did have somebody call me and said, we're not all huge and we're not all in warehouses. And we have two in Freeport, and one went into an existing manufacturing and processing place. So it's, and I would say visually appealing metal building. Yeah, they used to make sales there. And the other one is in a old house looking structure that has been many things over the years, but you, it's not warehouse-ish.
Right, you would, yeah.
It's interesting because the standard on MDA and MDB for warehouses, basically, and Caroline, please correct me if I'm wrong, but on lots that are greater than three acres, you could go up to a total of 10,000 square feet. However, they would have to be on like these separate buildings, which.
No more than 40 feet apart.
It's.
Interesting. And I think another thing that's, that's interesting that I think some of the public comment here definitely got me thinking about is that I, I guess, kind of assumed in all of this, we're writing for new, you know, new development, new construction. Somebody wants to come in and do this and start from scratch with, you know, empty lot with excavator and, you know.
Do you think like.
But, right.
They're repurposing.
But yeah, I think, I think Andrew's point is a great point, like, yeah, because, you know, you can't get a, you know, a mortgage.
Federally backed.
Yeah, federally backed loan, thank you. There's a, you know, it's just as likely or maybe more likely that these would go into existing spaces. So perhaps.
My, my one concern is, and I don't know, maybe there's a definition, but it keeps referring to gross floor area in a real estate.
There's a definition. I can finally say there's a definition.
And so what, what is, you know, because in all real estate terms, gross floor area is usually, is heated areas used for leasing purposes. But for manufacturing, any kind of that, it's always gross building area. And so technically, if, depending on what the definition is.
And the reason why, you know, this may be relevant, not only because if, if we went with the standard of 2,500 square feet for smaller lots, is that we would be making the existing uses that are right now nonconforming.
Would they be grandfathered nonconforming, correct?
Legal, they could become legally nonconforming.
It'd be grandfathered. Yeah, but they couldn't then add anything. They couldn't do anything.
Limitations. I think the existing businesses were two of the people that really had approached the council and been vocal in wanting us to look at it. And we do have some of them on, but to answer the couple of questions, that's the definition.
That is a little different, but it works. So basically what my, my point was, is they couldn't just build four unheated garages and just say, this is not gross floor area, this is gross building area. And so, but that basically is, covers it, basically.
Do we have?
So it's gross floor area and gross building area. Gross building area is the footprint of the building, not the amount of floor space in the building, correct?
Exactly.
So you could have a, like, one up on Route One up north up there, it's got three stories.
Right.
So you wouldn't consider that as gross floor area?
We use gross floor area for my land use.
Yeah, it's a little different. Most, at least, you know, usually there's three. Gross living area, gross floor area, and gross building area. That's usually the three that most.
But gross floor area would include the three stories as three stories.
But for this, but for this general size of cultivation, to get a tier one, tier two, you'd have to go by gross floor area, am I correct? Because you've got square footage. So it's how many square foot you have that you can use. So that would.
But it includes all of those things.
Yeah.
Parking space, any loading docks.
Oh, it does include loading docks.
Does not include interior parking.
But not parking, not loading docks.
So it basically includes everything except for those three items. So it's a, it's a all encompassing area. So everything needs to be counted except for those, so that every floor would have to be counted.
Not garages.
Right. But if like there, it's three stories, but it's cathedral, then it wouldn't count. Like if there's no floor. So you do it on gross, but you could have, like the third floor could only have partial floor. That didn't sound right.
Yes, an attic, an attic doesn't count. A cathedral ceiling doesn't count.
Or like a case that has like the low ceiling, some of that wouldn't count because it's really not usable for most people.
Right.
That's why it's floor area.
That's why it's floor, not building.
Not building.
Exactly.
So I want to try to figure out what the approach to get us through to the next phase of noticing a public hearing. I think the.
You do have a hand up on Zoom. That's one idea.
Yes. And I would like to get to that.
Okay, sorry, I didn't.
No, no, I think it's good. I think the, I think one approach would be to just sort of, like Mitch said, go to a more manufacturing and processing based approach and see what happens if we remove some of the more strict limitations that are placed on warehouses. How do we sort of balance that with, because we don't want to necessarily remove things, places that don't. Yeah, that, that don't, like, we don't want to remove all, the whole warehouse thing and then all of a sudden remove a whole zone that we identified as being, you know, a good place for it. I'm not sure if that would happen or not. But, but, but sort of go back to a more relaxed or more permissive maybe standard that would allow, that would be based on manufacturing and cultivation, performance standards and, you know, setbacks in sizes and all that. I think that's one approach. And then I think if people have specific questions maybe about the language that's there now, I guess that's the other thing that we need to drill down into, I guess, a little bit. So I think the first part of that is, does that approach seem generally to be the right one to everyone to sort of?
Language, language meeting.
What's that?
Language meeting zones, or language meeting.
Well, the manufacturing, removing the warehouse.
Yeah. So the first part of it is, are we generally okay with a more permissive approach, given the public comment and given that we've now had a chance to read through what the, you know, what we sort of steered Cecilia toward last time? How do people feel about it? Is it, is it the right approach? Should we be more permissive?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are there areas where manufacturing and processing are allowed, but warehousing is not allowed?
Yeah, I can pull that up from the last meeting.
Hold on.
Yeah, we had that graph.
You mean areas, you mean zones?
Zones.
Okay.
So we already said it's only going to be in zones where both are allowed.
This is.
And I thought that was a good idea.
So in the commercial district one, manufacturing is allowed and warehouse is not.
Right.
In the commercial district three, warehouse is not allowed, but manufacturing is. And the opposite is on the local business district, which we can't have anything there because like the whole school buffer, that one is the opposite. It allows warehouses, but not manufacturing.
Well, then that tells.
Could I propose that we stick with that? That, that we limit it to those areas where both those uses are allowed, but that we follow the manufacturing and processing.
Performance standards.
Performance standards.
That's interesting. And then I.
I'm not sure that's right. I mean, just for discussion.
I think it's a good, yeah. Yeah, I agree. That it's a good, it may be a good starting point.
Just to rewind you that list you just went over. So C3, I think another reason that you kind of not skipped over it, but you can see there's a daycare in the middle. And so knowing that you went in a thousand foot buffer, it does take out a lot of that district. Not the whole district. Village Commercial Three has built out primarily residential. It's just over the railroad bridge, kind of on the right. There's very little buffer encroachment there. That's somewhere that manufacturing is allowed, but not warehouse and storage.
Right.
Just to go link back to your, but if you want to stick with your philosophy, just switch which standards you're using, that makes sense.
So then, so then the VC3 would still be not allowed.
Right.
Yeah, which may be the right approach.
Yep.
And I guess the other thing I want to hear about from the public comment is about the artisan food and beverage issue that someone had written in about.
Yep.
The what issue?
The artisan food and beverage issue, that this be considered for processing of edibles or what have you.
See those errands?
I'm not, I'm just curious to learn more. I'm not, personally, I don't have an opinion right now. But I'm interested to hear what the public has to say about it.
So the difference is that the artisan food and beverage is allowed on the VC2 district, but not on, but it doesn't allow manufacturing or warehousing on that district. And, hold on, there's one more. And the VC4.
One, two.
I like how, I think Mitch has thought, basically keeping what we talked about last time, except the standards will be adhering to the manufacturing as opposed to the more strict warehouse.
Because, yeah, there might be someplace where artisan food is allowed, that we don't want to allow this.
Oh, I'm not proposing that we do. I'm just saying, I think we, the public has made a comment about it, and I'd be curious to hear more about their thoughts.
To learn more.
I'm not saying either way right now.
Yeah, if you want to hear comments, I think one thing, I have the definitions here. We looked at this last meeting, but artisan food and beverage is also typically small scale production with a retail component, which we're not.
I think this topic, I think we, we have a good baseline, and I think we're just going to be informed by the public.
Which is why I'd encourage us to move as quickly as we can.
And I'm definitely, I mean, hearing seven meetings, I was like, oh my gosh.
We don't need to.
I think we're ready.
We need to put something in front of the public.
So I'd like to hear from the hand that's raised. Anyone have an objection to that?
No.
Great. Let's call, I can't see that far.
David Stevenson, you want to bring him over to the top? Okay, David, you can share your thoughts with the board.
Hey, good evening. My name's David Stevenson. And I own 24 Noble Drive, which houses a grow facility, medical grow facility. I've been talking with the town, going to meetings for years, trying to push this forward. It's great to see it's, it's gone through the planning board and it looks like there's a mover. I guess I'm concerned for the manufacturing, like what kind of square footage is allowed for, for growing and manufacturing? Because I understand that it's quite a bit less than my building is, which is 9,300 square feet. Half of the building is still under construction. And if it was less than that, that my business would be seriously screwed. And I can't, I can't have that. You know, I've been, I've been, I've been working with the town. I'm a taxpayer. I, I have gone to these meetings and spoken with people, like I said, for years. I would, you know, I think it's great that you're, you're considering having this additional business come in, this artisan edible business. But I've also been here for, I don't know, eight years, and I've been petitioning the town to allow adult use. And I just. And I just would want to make sure that the people that have been here are still allowed to continue their business and they're not going to get screwed by, you know. I would just recommend, I guess personally, I would feel better if it was more like 10,000 square feet was the allowed use for growing and manufacturing.
Yeah, that's, that's, I think that's what, what we were just talking about. Can I ask a clarifying question, then Mitch, if I don't ask the same one? Are you saying that, that, is there anything about the artisan food and beverage use that, that would impact your business, either positively or negatively?
I own edible businesses and I'm all for, you know, encouraging other businesses. We have a great, you know, cannabis community in Maine and, you know, we're stronger together than, you know, just single businesses. But yeah, I know, I have no problem with that, that use in the town. And I just want to make sure that I'm able to still operate my business and that I don't get.
Right, so it's the, yeah, so it's the square footage cap that would, that would impact.
It's the square footage cap that scared me, yeah. And I would, I'm within, I'm over 100 feet away from a residential home, but I think that was another thing that they were talking about. I went out and measured it and it is less, excuse me, more than 100 feet. But, you know, I was, all this language kind of made me a little nervous and I just want to make sure that you guys don't forget about me and my 9,300 square foot.
So if you have a moment, Mitch has a question for you.
I have a question for, I'm not sure if it's for you or if it's for Carolyn. But the question is, we, we had some confusion here about the warehouse square footage standards and the manufacturing and processing square footage standards. But my question is, does your building or your desire meet the manufacturing and processing square footage facility, the standards? And if it doesn't, why should it?
Well, what is that standard? I guess that was my question earlier.
These, we have two businesses that went in before the current cannabis regulations and they went in under manufacturing and processing regulations. So when this business went into the space, it was the manufacturing and processing and research and development facilities, up to 10,000 square feet of gross floor area, which is why he's at 9,300 square feet. And so based upon what you guys are talking about tonight, you would be looking at that same thing being in place, with the exception of you guys already decided they couldn't do outdoor storage, so that would.
So he would be all set with our.
He wouldn't necessarily be able to expand if you went with that approach, but he would.
Would I be able to, sorry to interrupt, but would I be able to finish my current build out that is that 9,300 square feet total? I have a building permit in place and we're under.
I think you can finish that no matter what.
Yeah, I think what we're talking about, that the threshold would be.
Well, right now, he's nonconforming. He's a nonconforming use, so.
Right, but he would be legally nonconforming.
Would get to have to look under the provisions of nonconforming expansion, so we're not going to weigh in.
All right, we're not going to weigh in on that, sorry.
Not that easy. But, but the point is, 10,000 square feet is the maximum for a manufacturing and processing facility?
In that zone.
In that, in your zone. And therefore you could get to 10, under the proposal we're considering, you could get to 10,000, but no more.
Under the proposal that we've, we've talked about tonight, not the one that's, yeah, not the one that's in writing here, but the one that we've just been talking about in the last 10 minutes or so, yeah.
It sounds like you'd be okay. You just can't get bigger because no manufacturing facilities can get bigger.
And that's fine. I'm, I'm completely fine with the amount. And actually, there's been a lot of decrease in the market lately, so, you know. Even doing this build out is, is going to be plenty for, I think, the market, at least currently, so.
But he's still, as of today, you were saying nonconforming?
Yeah, today, the cannabis is not legally conforming use, so they're.
But I'm also a business that got a permit from the town, you know, seven or eight years ago, before you guys had any rules in place.
Right.
Yeah, which is why you're legally nonconforming.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, sorry. It just, you keep saying nonconforming.
Sorry, we're giving you credit for the legally part.
No, I got it.
Legally, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, it's a complicated space right now.
I just want to, I'm just trying to look out for.
Thank you.
My employees and myself, and I appreciate all the work you guys have put into this.
Yeah, and we, I know I've heard your voice here for at least five years now, so it's, we appreciate the input as well.
Thanks, David.
All right, great, thanks, guys.
Any other hands while we're?
Are you doing Zoom first?
Public mode. Uh, I'd be, any hands in person or Zoom, whoever's fastest wins, I think. I cannot see far enough to read.
So Erin would like to comment, so I'll bring Erin over to comment.
Yep, that sounds good.
Hey, Erin, you're good to go.
I didn't realize, I didn't realize we were at comment time, so thank you. My name is Erin Pastor and I live in Portland and I'm looking to do business in Freeport. Before I go on, you know, I submitted a note to the board. I would read it for the record, but I don't, I think that would be a waste of all our time. I just want to confirm that, that was received.
We did receive it.
Yep.
Fantastic. So I am happy to discuss the uses and my descriptions of them. I know at least one board member said they wanted to talk about artisan food and beverage. And then I also have a question for my comment, so I'm happy to do whichever one you'd like first.
Let's, uh, let's do the question first. I feel like that's, that may be more, I don't know.
That's fine.
That's my decision.
Sure. So from the sounds of the earlier conversation, it looks as though you're considering restricting uses based on some sort of combination of manufacturing and warehouse space, but you're not really going to use the warehouse use. That, that feels kind of, that feels a little strange and so I just, you know, I'd love.
Yeah, at this point, we've looked to manufacturing and processing and warehousing and maybe to a lesser extent to artisan food and beverage, not for, just, just as a jumping off point to try to develop our standards.
For location.
And where, and where?
Yeah, for location.
We're limiting it to the locations where both exist.
But it has nothing to do with the standard.
But not limiting it to the standards of those.
So that I assume is just a way to restrict it in the town, I guess, right?
Correct, in less places in the town. If for some reason only one is allowed, we won't allow this. That's the proposal on the table.
Okay, I mean, it's a, it's. Oh, I guess we're all not muted? Is that the way it works? That's fine. Should we be done fishing? You guys want me to keep going or you want to?
It's a good, no, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, you know.
Is there another, wait, hold on. Sorry, Erin, I think there's another person who's not muted.
I just muted.
There we go, it's not you, okay. There was confusion over that, please continue, sorry.
No problem. You know, you, it's obviously to someone in my position that feels, that feels restricted. I can appreciate the conversation that, that you all consider this a sensitive use, you know, and, and want to, want to move it into various select areas. But, you know, I'm of course in opposition to that, given that there'll be plenty of restrictions around schools and, you know, other parts of, other parts of town. That was really, you know, I just wanted to make sure that that's what you were doing to, to kind of compress the use and you've, you've clarified, or compressed the locations and you've clarified that. So if anyone has any questions for me about anything I wrote or just why I was, you know, talking about the different uses and, you know, if someone mentioned artisan food and beverage, I'm happy to talk about that or I'll be quiet.
Wouldn't artisan food and beverage just fall in the same category? I mean, making edibles is just the same, right? It would be treated the same. Or is there a restriction on making edibles?
Any cannabis use would have to fall under a permitted cannabis use, so it'd have to be listed as cannabis cultivation or manufacturing and processing in that zone. You can't just fit into another use, you need to be.
No, I don't think anybody has the intention of trying to have them fit into a artisan food and beverage use. I'm just trying to figure out, could they do their, what they're calling artisan food and beverage in these manufacturing zones that we're permitting it?
Yes.
You can use, yeah, you can make edibles as.
That's all.
If you add it as a use.
Yeah.
So it should be added as a use, it would seem to me. If you're going to manufacture anything, why can't you manufacture that?
Yeah.
Well, it's a little bit different though, because, you know, we don't call if, like, what, Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, but in your letter, the point you were making is like if you're opening up a regular bakery or like a chocolate shop or a microbrewery, it has to be a food and drink. So then you're established in artisan food and beverage. But when we're talking about cannabis, if you're making a food with cannabis in it, you're not in the artisan food and beverage zone or permitted standard. You're then in processing and manufacturing.
You're in manufacturing and processing zones, but you can do that.
Yes, so I think, but as a board, we just need to be clear, we're deciding these sayings because we want it to be more restrictive.
Correct, yeah.
And because we function as a board, like, does everyone feel that is the right way to go?
I don't necessarily. I think there's too much restriction in my, you know, overall in this. And I had a question about the indoor/outdoor cultivation. Is that a foregone, is that determined by the town council or is that before us?
No, at the last meeting, you guys decided that you were not going to include artisan food and beverage as a comparable and that you were not going to allow outdoor growing of cannabis, which we also feel like, based upon common, is not common practice in large scale in Maine.
So it hasn't been put to a vote yet, but it's been discussed as the general consensus?
Right, those are general consensus that you guys had at past meetings.
In one of the previous six meetings.
I don't remember us coming to consensus around artisan food and beverage, I think.
The last meeting.
Yeah.
I'm getting called out. Got it.
And so for me, you know, obviously, right, it's purely self-interest. I, you know, have the potential to rent in a zone that allows both artisan food and beverage as well as manufacturing and processing. But since warehouse is not allowed, you'll be restricting that. And part of my reasoning for bringing up the different uses under manufacturing and how diverse they are is that just to illustrate what you are effectively allowing and disallowing in different places. And so, you know, usually size is a concern, odor is a concern, those are the two main ones and that's why I, that's why I touched on those.
Is it worth reviewing again where manufacturing and processing is allowed, but other, but warehousing isn't?
But yeah, that would be helpful, I think.
Just to make sure we understand the point that's being raised. Assuming we just followed manufacturing and processing.
So the only different ones, if you were to look at artisan food and beverage, would be the village commercial one and the village commercial four.
No, don't look at artisan food and beverage. Because I don't, only look at manufacturing and, we said manufacturing and processing plus warehousing. What if it was manufacturing and processing and we just didn't pay any attention to warehousing? Where would that permit it that would not be? It's those two zones, right? VC?
VC3 would be added.
VC3 and VC1.
VC3 and VC1.
Yeah, that's the only difference, is VC1 and VC3.
So VC1.
Have the schools.
Oh, you want to see that? Yeah, I think VC1, they might both have some kind of restrictions associated with them.
It would be limited, but there would still be parcels that could.
There's probably a couple of spots. I'm assuming that for Erin, and if Erin's still on, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's probably a space in VC3. I would think that VC1 would be a tough sell in the town.
I would too.
But I don't know that, obviously, I don't know that.
That's the buffer map.
Oh, so you'd have the very southern end.
It'd be VC3.
There is a little bit.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then I think.
And VC3?
Just south of that, that little pink.
Down that pink.
Oh, just that little pink.
It's just a little bit of it.
I always think of it as where the Christmas trees are and then.
Independent Drive area.
That's a good, good point.
It's a lot, yeah, there's, there's some business, but residential. Let me look.
Is that include Eastland Shoes Warehouse?
No, that is I1, which is already on your list.
Oh, that is, okay.
Okay.
So it's kind of, so that's the pocket of I1 that's tucked between.
So Wilbers isn't in VC?
They're VC, the old Wil, the former Wilbers.
Is, oh, it is, okay.
Andy, here's a better map of the I1. Well, it's not great, cut off, but. Let me just look at VC1. I feel like.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a valid question is.
Maybe we should just be following manufacturing and processing.
So, but not allowed in VC1 because of the nature of VC1?
Can I just clarify VC1? This might just answer your question right here. So in VC1, manufacturing accessory to or associated with a retail trade located in the district.
Oh, okay, so it's not really permitted, it's not really a.
And because we can't do retail, we already know that.
And then the V.
VC3 is the only other one that is affected here.
VC3, I would assume, so the intent of the district is to begin the transition from village commercial to neighboring this district, which is included in design review, contains a mix of residential and commercial, which are located in structures maintaining residential design and scale, new construction needs to be compatible, et cetera.
So also the entrance to the town.
Right.
Manu, this is that, back to that language, which we couldn't figure, we couldn't research, we couldn't figure it out. Cecilia tried to research it, but manufacturing and processing, which does not involve the basic refinement of bulk raw materials.
Well, then we've answered our question.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Sorry, could you put the table up one more time?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I mean.
It's the only thing we're talking about.
I think it is, you know, perhaps what we're hearing is we've gone a little too far in the restrictions and it's not, you know, if we allow or propose allowing this in the VC3, for example, all the other standards still apply. You still can't do it within 100 feet of a residence, you still, you know, so it's not.
It's kind of pointless because, I mean, unless they, unless there's a workaround.
It may be pointless to exclude it though, because if somebody comes up with the one spot, I mean, why are we excluding that one spot?
That's a valid point.
Because I just heard we're trying to move it away from a manufacturing area. That was the intention of the space.
I think, you know, the other thing you guys can consider, again, the council's going to have a whole licensing thing, they can put limits, they can put different tiers, but from a land use perspective, you know, the districts are different, there are different shapes and different forms. You know, like Andy referenced, we have an old standard that on Route 1, certain uses have to be stepped back. There are certain districts where things are limited in square footage. You know, there are land use standards that you can incorporate in different districts as you feel might make it appropriate at a bigger or smaller scale.
Well, I mean, just like based on what you said, maybe the land use standard should be a little more liberal because there are other ways of being more restrictive if that's deemed the, the, the town's.
I feel like the, the land use standards that we've come up with, I think are probably a pretty good starting point if we, if we sort of back away from the, the extra restrictions that are in the MDA and MBB that are on warehouses. So if we remove that, then warehousing and manufacturing and processing become pretty similar, I think. I don't have, obviously, photographic memoratization.
We're going to follow the manufacturing and processing standards and I think the only question on the table is, is it allowed in VC1 and VC3?
Well, it wouldn't be allowed for VC1.
It wouldn't be allowed on VC1 because it has to be adjacent, so that's off. And VC3 is the only thing we're talking about then.
Yeah.
And VC3, could you read that again?
Um, it was allowed, but can't include like the refinement of raw materials or something like that.
Can't include the refinement of raw materials. So I think we did it right to say no.
The only other thing, and I don't, this is a slippery slope, but like, to me, maybe we're just not ready for this as a community, but like, thinking about, we allow microbreweries as an artisan food and beverage, but we're not going to allow cannabis? but we're not gonna allow cannabis, like, I don't think we're ready...
I think we're not ready.
We're not ready for that, but that, that, to me, it's just kind of like, huh, that doesn't...
I agree, I sort of get it, but I think we're trying to let this happen without pissing people off.
But if you look at that, the only one that would actually make a difference in is...
VC three.
VC three.
All right, well, I'm, I would be...
Which it goes back.
I would be in favor of, at least, in, in service of creating draft language and going to a public hearing, and hearing from more people of adding VC three as an allowed district, because I think there are other restrictions that would, that would limit the use, and, and that, that way, we're doing a clear thing, which is saying, all right, we're following the manufacturing and processing sta... You know, where...
In VC three, but in VC three, we just read both?
Refinement.
And we have that in other districts, we talked about it at the last meeting. Some districts say that, and we don't know why. In some of these districts here, I think, was it industrial or something, has that...
To clarify, it's on the industrial.
And then we should include VC three.
Like, there's only one district that doesn't have that.
We just say that, and then they go to that zone, and it's like, well, it's prohibited for these other reasons, but at least we're being consistent.
Yeah, I say include VC three, then.
I think it moves the ball.
Yeah, I think it's a really good baseline for public input.
Yeah, and more than public input, I mean, there is, you know, there is the, the real chance that it, that it goes through and gets recommended to the council, and the council goes through the licensing. I think we just need to, we just need to put this in motion, and I think it's a fair, I mean, anybody who's, you know, walked through the east end, when, what was it, shipyard down, I mean, there are orders associated with microbrewers, too, obviously, so, um, which is not to minimize the, you know, the experience of people living close to it who may oppose for whatever reason. I just think that we, we're, we're, we've spent a lot of time on this.
We're ready to hear.
I think we have a pretty good compromise on a lot of issues.
So can I ask a question? You were discussing allowing it where warehouses is not, and manufacturing is. So how does that affect, so it's gotta have both?
No, no, I think allowing it in those two zones, it's just we're adhering to certain standards.
So, so what are you narrowing it down to now, two zones, MDA and MBB?
No, 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 no.
The only, the only change that, that happens as a result of what we talked about tonight is we would allow it in VC three where it was previously prohibited.
Can I put in my two cents?
Sure, always.
I think, I think it's ridiculous for us to count, LL Beans is property, industrial one, and out on the desert road, because they've invested millions of dollars, and I don't think they're gonna go to marijuana production. I just think it's silly to even assume they're gonna do that.
Well, but we're...
Sort of futile. I mean, they're gonna be here for another 30, 40 years, probably, I would assume.
Hopefully.
So why are we even going down that road with them?
I think it goes down a slippery slope if you're adjusting your land use standards, geographical area, based on the owners of property.
Right, we're supposed to be dealing with land use.
Yeah, I think you need to, like, you know...
Well, I'm not saying we need to treat Bean special, I'm just saying, that, that's a use that I don't think's gonna change.
Do they own 100% of the...
They don't own 100%.
They don't own 100% of that district.
There are other parcels in there, I think, right?
There are, that's the point.
Okay.
How would you be bringing VC three into it? That's how I'm, I'm confused, by saying...
Just adding...
I think you say all, all manufacturing and processing, and it, all you have to do is say it's manufacturing and processing, and VC one will be excluded automatically...
Right, because VC three...
Because of their special restrictions.
So it's not, we're not including it for both warehouse and...
So, right, it just scratch that.
Okay, so I, sitting here, hearing this discussion, I feel like, from a staff perspective, I need clarification. I'm not sure if you're at a majority consensus, or you're not. I definitely am clear on a couple people, but what I hear you talking, that I feel like we need majority consensus, is are you shifting your approach a little bit, and saying, okay, we're going to allow it, where manufacturing and processing is allowed with the exception of the VC one, and we want it to mirror those standards, included in that approach, is adding VC three? I'm not sure, happy to do the work, but I'm not sure if I hear a majority at this...
I think what you said is correct, I think, but also, we've at least talked about changing the threshold that these folks need to meet, and, uh, to the manufacturing thresholds, and not the warehouse.
Yeah.
So those are the changes that I think we talked about, right?
That's my understanding of it.
And VC three would already be included in that, you don't even have to mention it, because...
No, you, well...
Well, we would have to add it into...
You have to add it, because if they are separate, yeah, these are separate uses.
So is everyone in agreement, or at least, there, there are four people in agreement to those changes as, as a baseline for, for...
We haven't really heard from Rosemary and Andy, I sense...
Or Andy.
Nah, I, I'm not a big fan.
But, I, I know you're not a big fan of it anywhere, and maybe that's where you're coming from?
No, no, I just think it's, you know, I think we're...
Should it be allowed and not allowed?
I think we ought to make, you know, I'd like to see it where these guys are, that's all, you know, it's, we got two guys here, and, uh...
You mean, just keep it in MDA and MBB, nowhere else?
Yeah, and so, and so, just, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Rosemary, what do you think?
Sounds good.
Yeah. I think we're, okay, well, so, yeah, I mean, are there enough people to make, you know, because...
Probably could've saved you a lot of work, Cecilia, if we had just not made you sort of combine the, um...
Sorry, Cecilia.
Part of the process.
That's okay, no, I, I appreciate the process and the thinking, and, and I, I think, I agree that, you know, regardless of who owns the land, we just treat the uses and the purpose of the zone equally, and not, you know, make assumptions about who owns it and might sell, like, we're speculating.
Right, exactly. So I think we do have, Caroline, I think we do have enough people, right? That, that's in agreement.
So then the only other thing it says, online, Aaron has a hand up, I'm not sure if it's a new hand or an old hand, and I don't know if anyone, if you were taking comment from the room tonight, or...
Oh, he put it down.
Okay, Aaron's hands down.
I do have a, a language suggestion, again. If you look at page four, the A starts out, it is, it is the intent of this district, and then on page 11, it says, it is the intent of this district, and then on page 16, it says, this district is intended to provide, and I think the one on 16 is the correct language.
Okay.
You might want to make that consistent.
Take it out of the passive...
Good eye.
Construction, yeah. I mean, that's our wordsmith.
Yeah, it is.
So fix, fix page 16.
Oh, the other way around.
That's the correct one.
That's the correct one.
Follow, follow 16.
Watch out for passive construction.
Also, districts don't have an intent, so it's not really a big one article.
I'll look at that, that might be a further change.
You might have to change quite a bit.
Notice every person in town.
Cecilia's like, oh, boy.
I'm just saying, correct number, page four and 11, and follow 16.
Right, and I'm saying there's a whole bunch of other sections.
Oh, really?
But we, what, we could, I'll flag it, what we did on the last time when we did the Shoreland, we had, we were advertising every section, so we did a whole bunch of cleanup. So we might not clean it up in every section, but when we do, it's on our list.
Just flag it, and then if we ever come back to that section to change it for something else, then you'd notice it once, and, yeah.
Did you have a public comment from here?
Yeah, anybody in the room who wishes to comment?
Eric Smith, I live in District Two, MDA for your purposes. I just have a question about the buffer zones, and the buffer zones, as you're, as you're talking about them, are based on existing schools and existing childcare centers. What happens when someone comes and wants to open a new childcare center? I'm assuming this is not unique to this situation, because usually you have buffer zones for other things, but I don't want the buffer zones to go the opposite way, in terms of preventing somebody from opening up a childcare center in their home, if some, if they happen to be within that thousand feet.
So the use would then become legally non-conforming, right?
Well, we're not talking about child, in-home daycares, because the board didn't want to include that, they're talking about larger facilities. My understanding...
Nursery schools, for example?
Yes.
Yeah, like, a, a center, or, my understanding is that childcare can't come into the cannabis buffer, but I believe, sorry, I said that wrong, cannabis can't come into the childhood buffer, but if the cannabis is there already, and then the childcare comes in, they can make that, although it could create a new buffer for future cannabis businesses, if that makes sense.
Which would make that one basically legally non-conforming.
I think that's the way it should be, I don't, if you can...
Is there that legal designation, though, like, does the cannabis business become legally non-conforming, or are they just continue to exist?
I don't know that it does, I think that's a legal question.
Yeah, it's an interesting question, but I...
And, and that's really just my, my question, and I feel like that ought to be specified one way or another, because then you're, I, I feel like you're gonna be then, back in that same position of having legally non-conforming businesses that then maybe not, cannot expand, which may be a hindrance to them, if, if you've got people that want to come in, and they finally found the spot within all of these restrictions, and then they become legally non-conforming.
If they have 5,000 feet now, they want to go to 10,000 feet in two years, and they expect they will, and now they can't, yeah.
But I, that's just...
Yeah, it's a little bit of a finder's keeper, sort of, like, whoever gets there first has the, yeah.
Right.
It seems like.
Well, we're not doing anything to limit daycare centers, I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
That is not happening at this board.
Yeah, can the planning board subsidize daycare centers?
God.
No longer need of daycare.
Oh, lucky.
So I feel like we have clear directive from the board on this, so you got through a lot of stuff tonight, we still have the ongoing cannabis, and we have site plan review, but one of the questions, I think, for the board, is that, I think with cannabis, we need to disappear for a little bit, and then magically reappear with some standards. We need to draft some language for the performance standards, you know, things like bufferings, or mitigation of certain things, work with the town attorney, and then come back to the board.
Before a public hearing?
Yeah, and we do need some time to do that, so one of my suggestions, and we have the site plan amendments, which we're still working through with the attorney, because they flagged some other stuff. Given the upcoming holiday, would the board be interested in taking off the month of September to give staff time to be working on this, to bring you back a full package? Or if you want to keep going, we could try to get the site plan stuff, but I know I'm gonna be out of the office for a while, that leaves Cecilia, and I feel like we could use a little downtime to get some of these things just done.
I think downtime is, I vote for that.
Well, are there other issues we should be dealing with?
If an application comes in, then you would want to meet, but as far as these two penning, we could, we could talk about the site plan if we get the comments back from the attorney, but I know it's busy.
Yeah, normally, I'm of the opinion of, there's always something to do, we should meet, but I think, and I did talk to Caroline a little bit about this, I think the timing of this may be okay to take a slight break, to give the staff a little bit of time to catch up, so that we can then have more of their time when we really need it, in a couple of months, when we start to dig into some of these other items.
Yeah, so the other things, I mean, we do a whole bunch of stuff behind the scenes in public notification, but we still are really trying hard, we have a couple RFPs that we need to get out, and so, taking a break, and then trying to get the attorney's time, which is, they're also very busy to work on some of this, I feel like could get us maybe actually a little bit further ahead. I know we have a lot of life changes on the board, too, I thought the timing was...
I mean, that's a very reasonable ask, yeah.
So I think, I think, you know, unless an application comes in, or if it makes sense in two weeks, if it makes sense to, to meet, then...
Yeah, and we could, if we hear back from the attorney, make progress on just the site plan stuff, if you want to meet, just to do that, or we could just do that when we do cannabis in October, or we could look at meeting later in the month in September, that's the other thing.
I think for now, we, we give you guys the breathing room, and so let's see if anything comes in over the next couple of weeks, and assume we want to meet, and if...
So there's 21-day submission requirement, so probably like, by the end of next week, you'll know from us, and I would say, you know, our boards have historically taken a break in the summer, neither board did this year, but enjoy it, because I...
Just a break for the board, it's a break for staff, too, which I think is useful.
It just gives us some time to work on other stuff. I would say that, don't get used to it, because you're gonna be really busy.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's why I think it makes sense to, to give you guys time, too, right now, so. Uh, item number five, I have no idea how this works, so, but I think tonight, even though it's late, and I understand that it's late...
We have to, we're all here.
We're all here.
We have to do it.
And so I feel like we have to do it.
So how it would work is, you would move in second for the three possessions. Chairperson would run the meetings, vice chairperson will be backup. Sometimes, like, if people have had to recuse or be absent, by default, the boards have nominated the secretary, but otherwise, I would say it's more, secretary is more of an honorary role. So somebody could move to nominate so-and-so for chairperson, somebody would second in, and then you would take a vote. For each possession, you would do that.
I'd like to nominate Sam for chairperson.
I would second that.
All in favor?
There's no delay in hands.
Okay, much, yeah, much, much appreciated, thank you all, it is an honor and a pleasure.
You do well.
Did you, did you recuse on that?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just clarifying for the record.
Glad I wasn't close for not... Thank you, I hit this all. I don't, I can't, motion still, right?
No, somebody else should.
Somebody else has to motion.
Motion for vice chair? Is that, oh, I mean, I'll, I'll do it again, I don't care, if, but...
I would nominate Robert.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, sorry, a little slow on the uptake, and I did vote yes on that one, so yes, six eyes. Anybody want to be the secretary?
Mitch wants to be.
No, I didn't really want to.
I know, Mitch for secretary.
There you go, I second.
Second, all in favor?
All in favor, don't worry.
I said I would do it, yeah, since it's, since it's nothing to do, I guess.
I mean, technically...
You'd be careful when you say that.
That is...
Technically, though, if, if Sam and I are not here...
I think you have new babies. Actually, I think you would vote of who you would, who would run the meeting. A lot of times, people have been like, all right, it's Mitch's turn.
Okay.
But Andy has voluntarily stepped up, too, so he's...